We're starting our workshop and I would just like to announce that this meeting is being broadcast with live Spanish interpretation. And in Zoom, we will have people click on the interpretation globe and select Spanish for translation accessibility. I would like to turn this over to our interpreter, Martín Riva Rola, to explain that to our Spanish-speaking audience.
Hola a todos y a todas. Tengan ustedes muy buenas noches. Quien les acaba de hablar es la alcaldesa de Petaluma, Teresa. Mi nombre es Martín Riva Rola y estamos hoy aquí transmitiendo este taller del Consejo Municipal de Petaluma en español. Si usted desea escuchar la transmisión de este taller en español, lo único que debe hacer es seleccionar en el fondo de su pantalla donde dice "Spanish". Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Martín. So, as I said, this is our first of two meetings to set goals for the city of Petaluma. And we're going to be working on doing that from the previous goals that we set in 2019 and had a meeting about in 2020 before COVID. But this is a workshop, so it is a slightly different format than a regular council meeting. There will be time for general public comment, but that will be at the end of the meeting and that will only be for items that are not on today's agenda. So what we will do, I will ask our city manager if she will give a little presentation about an overview of this meeting. But we will have public comment on each of the goals that we will be looking at. And there are five general categories of goals. And the public comment will be limited to one minute per goal, but you can come back and speak to the next goal as well. And if you feel you need more time or you have more comments that you would like to make, we urge you to go to the city website at thecityofpetaluma.org/goals and put in all your comments there. Or you can email the city clerk at cityofclerk@cityofpetaluma.org and put goals in the subject line and it will also get to the staff for this purpose. So with that, I'm going to send, hand it off to our city manager, Peggy Flynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members, city staff, and our beloved community members. I'm going to ask staff if they would put up the PowerPoint. And go ahead and click through to tonight's agenda, please. So tonight, we will be walking through each of our five goals. We have staff ready to present kind of an overview of what we've accomplished, what new work plan items were added over this past year. Then council can ask questions. We will turn it over to public comment and then we'll come back to council discussion. And we're budgeting about 45 minutes per goal, but we'll see how that goes. And then we'll take you through kind of a preview of our next workshop, which is going to be prioritizing all these amazing work plan items and next steps. And then we'll go into general public comment. Next slide, please. So last time we met, as the mayor mentioned, was February 2020, pre-COVID, pre-fires, then EOC activation, pre-virtual city hall. And look how much we've evolved. In order to evolve, we had to give up what we are good at and what we are used to doing. And we became extraordinarily creative, flexible, good at active listening, extraordinarily compassionate, and translated all of that into on-the-ground solutions. So as you can see, as we went through 2020, we had, we immediately went into shelter-in-place in March 2020. And we quickly pivoted to be able to respond to the needs of our, the changing needs of our community and our businesses and our staff. And it was, it's been a miraculous year that has brought us to this new place. And I said that in order to evolve, we had to give up what we're good at and used to doing. And who we were brought us to that point and who we've become will move us forward and beyond. So our hope for this evening is that you take stock, appreciate, and in some cases, marvel at all your staff has achieved over this incredibly challenging, life-changing year of evolution. So next, I'm going to introduce our assistant city manager, Brian Cochran, and our risk manager, Erica Leahy, to talk about our first goal, a city that works for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Peggy, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Aaron, if you don't mind, go into the next slide. So first, just a quick overview of all five of the goals. These were the five goals like the council initially set back in 2019. So we have a city that works for everyone, as Peggy alluded to, our environmental legacy, a safe community that thrives, an economy that prospers, and spaces and places that inspire. And so those will be kind of the five umbrellas that you'll be hearing staff discuss and we'll be taking up both council feedback and public comment through each of these five goals. Next slide, please. So the first goal, a city that works for everyone. This is really focused on ensuring a fiscally and organizationally sustainable city, being innovative and efficient, engaging the community, being proactive, having safe infrastructure, kind of all those basic core things that we really need to be a city that works for everyone. And so we'll get a little more detail on the next slide if you go ahead. So within this overarching kind of broad goal of a city that works for everyone, there are four key areas. And each bullet here doesn't necessarily represent one specific work plan item, but we wanted to kind of give the community and the council a flavor of the overall outcomes and our vision for what success really looks like with this particular goal. So first, the city organization, kind of looking at how we're staffed, how we're funded, are we being sustainable in the long run? And we've talked a lot about that over the last year. Are we being efficient and effective, creative? Do we have a diverse workforce that reflects our community? We need to be customer-focused and we need to make sure that staff are getting the training and the wellness that they need. The next one is infrastructure, active transportation, safe streets, looking at mobility and transit functions within the city and making sure that those are accessible. And then focusing on our city buildings and our facilities, our parks, and all those infrastructure categories that are so important. The third category is really transparency, community engagement, public outreach, making sure that we're utilizing our boards, commissions, and committees, and really with a focus toward diversity, equity, and inclusivity in Petaluma. And then finally, really a technology focus. And so that's about improving our customer service. You've seen a lot of new online services recently and we'll touch on some of those, I think, later. Making sure that we're resilient. We've got improved engagement, efficiencies overall through the city, and better communications citywide. So if we could move to the next slide, I think Erica is going to go ahead and talk through some of the new items that we're proposing to add coming up here in 2022.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening. As Brian mentioned, we have been focusing our efforts on a number of items on our work plan related to the goal of a city that works for everyone. I'll now dive into some of the items we have added to the work plan over the last year. HR and legal are currently working on a number of citywide policies that are in need of updating. There's a prioritization list and we will be working through that and bringing the policies to the various bargaining groups for review. Additionally, HR is working with a number of staff in various departments to develop guidelines and policies around the city's reopening from the COVID closure. The main goal is opening in a way that supports the safety and flexibility for city staff. COVID-19 has shown us that there's a real need to have a flexible work model and the city has met that challenge head-on. The IT department was able to convert a large number of staff to work from home in a very rapidly changing situation. With lifting of COVID restrictions, the city will be looking at how best to incorporate some of this flexibility to allow for a greater work-life balance for staff. And this will help us maintain our employees' retention rates, productivity, and morale. With the passage of Measure U, we will be investing in the city's infrastructure, including our streets and facilities. And we will also be examining the city's staffing needs to ensure we have adequate staffing to support the needs of our citizens. With that, we will also be analyzing public safety staffing as well as their facility needs and response times. With our hiring, we will be focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as part of that effort, we'll be updating our recruitment materials to appeal to a more diverse audience that is representative of the community. Additionally, we have already begun our efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings for staff and plan to do those trainings citywide. Staff are nearing completion on the city's urban water management plan and water shortage contingency plan, and that plan will be brought to council in May. Additionally, the 2022 utility rate study is authorized to award, and the task related to exploring a customer assistance program is part of the scope of that study. Brian will now tell you about some of the city's major accomplishments towards this goal over the last few years.
And Brian, if I can just interrupt really quick, it's a reminder that we are live interpreting these, everything that's being said, and our interpreters are having a little bit of trouble keeping up. So if we can try to slow down just a little bit so they can catch up, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sounds good, Patrick. Thank you for that reminder. Much appreciated. So Aaron, if you could go ahead to the next slide. So just an overview of some of the accomplishments in a city that works for everyone. And I really marvel at the amount that has been able to get done even through a global pandemic. And obviously, one major accomplishment that we will be rolling out, and Erica alluded to it, is Measure U. And we walked through some of the initial planning there a few weeks ago on infrastructure, workforce stabilization, our core staffing initiatives. And that will really be an exciting new era effectively for the city of Petaluma. We completed the Maria Drive renovation and repaving. That's a really exciting project. And speaking of exciting projects, the river dredging was really a key highlight over the past year to make that river navigable, safe, and really restoring it to being the key asset of the city that it is. I mentioned a little bit earlier, citywide communications, and that's been a major focus for staff in terms of our new website, the citywide newsletter that has come out, and a variety of new outreach tools that we have put in place to help us talk to our residents and get that feedback that's so important to city decision-making. We had the Water Street North project move forward. That is exciting as well. The, you see over there on the right, the social equity dialogue. So that's really a project that, well, we've got it here in accomplishments. It's really, you know, we kicked it off and we've begun the dialogue with the Leghorns Park, public forum, the creation of the community ad hoc committee. And some of those efforts will be ongoing. So we've, we've kind of started that effort and that dialogue will be continuing. We have also worked significantly on emergency preparedness. And unfortunately, that seems to be a regular and annual occurrence that we need to continue flexing that muscle and making sure that we are able to assist our residents as well as we tend to be a point of safe haven for other residents in Sonoma County and surrounding jurisdictions with some of the significant sheltering efforts that we've undertaken. And then finally, while maybe not as glamorous and not as evident to the public, we have really been focused on our IT master plan, which we presented to council about a year ago. And as part of that effort, a big focus on just our core backbone systems, data backups, network improvements, and making sure that we've got quality technology infrastructure to serve both the city staff and the work that we do, as well as our ability to communicate and then offer residents high-quality electronic services. So with that, I think let's move to the next slide. And we're going to, we're going to jump out of the PowerPoint, I believe. And I think Jason Baty, our director of public works and utilities, is going to help us look at a little more detail at the work plan items themselves in the spreadsheet or the document that was attached to the staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. I'll go ahead and share the spreadsheet that was used to generate the document that was attached. And I just wanted to confirm, you can see that now? Not yet. There, one more button. Nope, that didn't work.
Yep, there it is.
You can see the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. So as Brian mentioned, you know, we had 157 work items that were identified from 2019. We have completed or have in progress 59% of those. There's 28% of those that we consider ongoing and are basically integrating into our business operations as a city. So those are ones that we see as staff as being able to be taken off the work plan. You know, they don't have an end date. These are integrated in and we're continuing to work on them. And then we have 13% that have not been initiated. And then we've, we've added 57 items to the work plan over the course of the last two years. And I'll be going through that. So we'll start with the city at work, that works. And we're going to narrow that down, the spreadsheet down, just to look at those. So within the city that works, we have 62 work plan items. Of that, originally, we had 41 and we've added 21 new work plan items. And those are, those are shown at the bottom of the spreadsheet in green. And what I'll show now is the complete items. And I think we'll... So these are the number of items that have been completed. We had 12 of those, 62 total. And some of the ones that are new and that we've completed are shown here in the bottom. So I think we'll pause here as we go through each kind of status of this goal and see if there's feedback from the council on these items.
Okay, so in terms of feedback, you know, let me just start this off by asking you, you made a distinction between goals that were set that are in progress and goals that are ongoing. Can you just explain what kind of goals, what differentiates those?
Yes, so the goals that are in progress, I'll start with the ongoing. Those ones are our goal. Let's look at some of those just so you can, can kind of, maybe that would help to explain. So you take this first one, for example, leveraging, these are goals that are really incorporated into the way we do business going forward. So they're not, there's no specific end date for them. They're not necessarily measurable, but this is a, you know, we're always looking to leverage local, regional, and state programs and resources to maximize the city revenues. That, that is the way we do business going forward. So having that as a, as a larger goal may not make as much sense as maybe we have a more specific measurable goals underneath this or work plan item. And I don't know if you want to add on to that, Peggy or Brian?
No, I think you captured it. It's not a, what we call a smart goal, right? Specific, measurable, I forgot what A stands for. But it's not...
Hopefully attainable.
Attainable, yeah.
Attainable, right. I mean, it's just continuing. It's just definitely the way we operate.
Yeah, integrate into our business. And then, so in progress are those goals that are measurable and attainable and that we're working towards completing. So that's the distinction between, between the two.
So I got the ongoing. So how are you, how are you describing the in-progress ones?
In-progress are ones that we've, we've started action on and they're various, and they're various states of progress, but we're not there to say we've, we've completed that. And we have some status on, in the column, the far-right column in that, that document that was attached to the staff report, updating, you know, some notes on, on the progress and where it's at. And we can, we can provide more detail on that as requested.
Okay, all right. Well, I hope that's helpful for the council members. And then, of course, completed are ones that have just been met. And there's either the work is ongoing now that they've been met, or, you know, they're, that's done and it's put to bed. So that, those are goods. So I'm sure council will have some comments about how they feel about this interpretation. But, you know, this is, this is the first time we're looking at this and so we'll work it out. By the time we get to goal five, I think we'll have it down. So I do see two hands up, and so I'm going to start with Councilmember Fisher and then go to Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you. So I'm wondering if a way to review this would be look at the ones that haven't been started? Because if we're looking at really what the next two years look like and we should, and hear from staff about whether they think that that's doable on those items. So I don't know if Jason, you can, you can sort that column by not initiated.
No, I think I probably should have led with that and kind of outlined what the plan was. I think we were looking for some, some feedback on, on what we've marked off as complete. And if, if there are issues with that, let us know. We can revisit those. But yeah, we do want to focus on just what you said, Councilmember Fisher, Vice Mayor Fisher, on those that are in progress or not, or not yet initiated. So we can look to the future and prioritize that work at the, at the next workshop.
And I would just add... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could you just select the ones that are showing now to be the ones that have not been initiated?
Right, I can do that.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Did you want to wait until those come up so you could maybe have something to say? Or do you want to look at it for a little bit and come back?
Well, I want to, I want to step back just a moment if I might, because over this last two years, as we've mentioned in the staff presentation, that we have this sort of new robust newsletter. And I think that it's something really worth celebrating. And I'm wondering if staff has any idea of the numbers that actually look at that newsletter and are, they get it on a regular basis.
That is a great question. I'm wondering if Ingrid Alverde maybe has some data on that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement. And I can tell you that right now, our mailing list is about 8,000. And we have an open rate of about 35 to 40% that has continued over, that continues today even after the emergency updates.
Fabulous.
And then we also have, I think, 7,000 followers between Instagram and Facebook. So we've made a lot of progress on our Instagram. So I think we're, you know, we're slowly but surely building our following and getting the word out for sure.
And how much does it build over on a monthly basis, would you say?
Oh, that's a good question. I'll have to look it up. I can look it up and I'll get back to you while we talk about other things, but I'll look it up.
Okay. Yeah, and just to let our audience know that it is a really good way to know what the city is doing. And I'm very impressed with those newsletters. Okay, so I'm not sure where to go from here, but in terms of this section, there are, one of the items that hadn't got initiated was the city charter. Another one was transit service. And transit service is definitely on my priorities. And there were a couple of things on infrastructure. One is really reimagining our transit system. We haven't really done that and I, and I think this is a good time to do that over these next couple of years while we're updating our general plan and figuring out how we're going to become more sustainable with our infrastructure. And the second thing I have that's not on this list is I'd like to really see us prioritize our bicycle safety and whenever we're improving streets. And again, a great opportunity over these next two years while we're spending so much money on street improvements. And we talked about this at one of our last meetings. It's really where we can and where we're striping streets to be able to stripe them for bicycles. And using the letter from Pete Gang that we all got today as sort of a base point. He laid out very nicely all of those items to look at.
Councilmember, could I interrupt you for a minute? This is the...
Yeah, I'm actually done. Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you. Those were really good points. What I would think would be helpful for fellow council members, for the public who has the staff report at home, and just actually everybody, if you could actually give the number of the item that you were interested in, the work plan item, when you're talking about it, if you know it or if you can see it, that would be very helpful so that, you know, those of us who also have that on our list may not feel the need to repeat it. And, you know, and then like Councilmember Fisher just did, she then brought in something that she thought should be added. So that makes a good distinction for us who are listening to this as well as participating. And I think it will help just move everything a little bit clearer. Also, I will say, the letter that Councilmember Fisher just mentioned by Pete Gang is available on the city website with this item. And I do think it is absolutely worth reading. So thank you again for pointing that out. So Councilmember McDonald, you can go next and followed by Councilmember King.
Thank you very much. Just with some overall comment, I mean, first, there's so much to celebrate, so much good work over this two-year period and yet so much path to follow to the, to the better place we all want to be in. But in regards to organization of this spreadsheet and deletion of items, et cetera, I would love for this to be somewhat of an archival document where we can continue to look at the successes. So if we filter it, but don't delete the lines so that the successes are all at the bottoms, the completes are the bottom, even the ongoing. So we can kind of use those ongoings as, as policy or as goal that, that we can review, yes, we do, we can point to and say, yes, we do look for grants on all these occasions. That's a fundamental virtue. Or yes, we do refer street projects to the P-back first so that they can integrate the pedestrian and bicycle influence on them. So I would like to see everything retained here, but the activity be at the top page, you know, the, we still need to work on the most at the top page. And, and then kind of breaking it down sort of individually, you know, there, there are a variety, I mean, many, many items. We have 180, nearly 200 unique items. It's really hard to go through a line by line, but certainly I want to commend the ongoing efforts of grants and encourage that to be more. I think that the updating our impact fees certainly needs, it's in progress, but I wrote a list of what's a big deal to me. That's one of them. Another one is to be, for the city to be a model employer. And, you know, it's in progress. A lot of good steps have been made. Measure U is facilitating some of that. But I worry about, call it burnout, call it overtaxing of staff. And I'd like to see more on an effort to be sure that we are rightsizing our staff and asking for the right things for them. That's how the success on actions will come is if we're not asking for more than is physically possible. And given we've been in a crisis for two years, I think perhaps we should review whether that's in fact what we've been doing. Then in the infrastructure category, you know, we have funding crosstown connectors. We did have a workshop on it, but we haven't made progress publicly. Staff works on many things, but not all of it gets out to public information. And that one, sorry. Um, staff works on many things, but not all of it gets out to public information. And that one, um, sorry, that is number 14, um, crosstown connectors. And, uh, also number 15, uh, I just, I think, um, it says in progress. That Measure U will be very helpful getting that up. And it and it hits so many goals when we do that. And then goal 20, integrate multimodal. Um, that's in progress. It, uh, talks about the bus actions there. That's on my list for big deal. And I think our recent conversation about the striping in a slurry contract proves that the city is not connecting with the public quite enough yet. So while we're getting going on a good item, certainly, uh, in progress means there's more work to happen. Number 22, the Corona Station, also in progress, also very difficult. If you don't have all the team pulling in the same direction, you know, it's very difficult for any one party, the city, to succeed. 26, updating the master, uh, the bicycle master plan, finding opportunity and grants for that. Uh, it mentions it's in in progress. It mentions that VMT is now vehicle miles traveled in development projects is now a factor. But, uh, it it's on my big deal list. I think that one needs to go right to the top, uh, especially signage for routes and and, uh, the need to connect not just the North River Development Project, but the bicycle opportunity to make smart paths through all of Water Street, all the way to the east side. You know, those pieces have to come together. And and I think that's a very doable short term. And then also there's a committee and commissions item, number 30. And it's in progress. But I think that that's one where we really need to bring more focus. Validate the work of the committees and commissions, empower those committee and commissions. Each of the committees could give feedback on how well empowered they feel. And I think we need to take that step to to find out exactly, um, what good work we can see from them. That's it for me in this first category.
Thank you. Um, we're going to go to Councilmember King, Councilmember Healy, and then Councilmember Posake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think I'm going to start out with both a a big compliment. And then, um, semi minor criticism, um, on how this is, how we're going about doing this. The the big compliment is one of my prior to, uh, last year, one of my practices was to submit in writing some goals, uh, in advance of our, uh, goal setting each year and submit that to the city manager. And I went back and took a look at some of the goals that I had submitted in 2019. That was April of 2019. And I compared it to this document, compared it to my memory, compared it to, uh, what has been accomplished. And, uh, over the course of two years, despite two major wildfires and a pandemic, among other things, um, a very major portion of what I had hoped to accomplish for us as a city have been accomplished or are are in very real progress to be accomplished. Things like, uh, getting solar panels, uh, at our public facilities, for example, or an all electric reach code, which will be coming to us in May. Uh, fireworks ban, um, minimum wage ordinance, and a few others that that many others that were on this list. So I'd like to start out by by saying thank you to the, um, I'd say Herculean effort of our our staff, which we we know, um, uh, as a council, um, and as a city that pays, knows that pay attention, that has been severely understaffed for that entirety, uh, two-year period, as it was prior to that for for a better part of a decade. So I I want to thank everyone who worked very hard on all of these accomplishments in every section, however it's defined. I'd also like to thank, um, my colleagues here on the diocese, the virtual diocese as it is, as well as past colleagues, because this doesn't get done with without our, uh, support. Um, we may not have agreed on all of the issues, uh, that that came forth. But I do want to thank, uh, thank, uh, my colleagues. Uh, it's good to have good working relationships. And I think from this document, you can see that much was accomplished. Um, and compared to some other legislatures around the country, um, in DC, let's say, uh, relative to our task, we did very well. Uh, my my criticism is going to be on the report and how it's presented. Uh, it, to me, it's it's all over the place with different categories. So I'm having a hard time trying to figure out where I'm fitting in my comments. So I may come back to something where it's in the category of a city that works, uh, because I stuck it in environmental legacy, so I'm going to apologize. But, um, my general comments at this point for what I think goes into the city that works. I wanted to follow up on the city charter comment from Councilmember Fisher. I, that was one of the goals I had popped in there for discussion. And I recognize that, given everything else, it's 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 not a a major priority. But I think it's overdue. Uh, and I I think that, um, uh, at some point in the next year or year and a half, we should probably have a committee put together to look at that and include council members on on that committee, uh, to to review, uh, to review our charter, see what needs to be changed or recommended for changes, and, um, whether we need a ballot measure, which I think we may, um, to deal with it. Um, the other item, um, uh, that was mentioned was transit. And at our Transit Advisory Committee lead-in meeting this year, I, the the subject I raised was how do we get more ridership? Because transit is is useless unless we have people on the buses. And one of the things I am proposing now, and I I proposed it at the time at the subcommittee, at the committee level, is to examine our routes. Uh, it's on here somewhere in terms of using major thoroughfares and 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 going through that. I won't get into too much specifics, but we we talk about transit oriented development and and really the transit here in the city is the bus. And unless we have a bus system that does actually work for everybody or more people, um, we're going to be spinning our wheels. So I I would want to see that, um, sooner rather than later to have us have a discussion about that at the council level. Um, and I certainly support, uh, the study of for public safety facilities. We we semi discussed that when we were discussing Measure U with respect to the, uh, fire station number one. Um, but I think an assessment and, uh, a presentation to the council on on that and some direction from the council on what to do about that is is important because the three fire stations clearly need a lot of work, as does the police station itself. And we have to try to figure out how we're going to go about, um, moving that forward. Um, and lastly, which I believe is under this topic, um, uh, well, the two topics, one is roads, and and I I know we were about to to put some significant money in the roads, um, which I wholly support, uh, is Corona Station. And I, uh, you know, I have a couple of questions about the funding on that and where things are. Uh, it's probably not the time to address that tonight, but one of the questions I have is how much funding is being sought in the grants and how much money, uh, will need to be committed from the city, uh, for for that. And that's item number 22. Thank you. Um, so those are my comments, I believe, on under this subject. But again, I really, uh, I really do want to put a shout out to our city staff because this was an awful lot of work that was accomplished over the course of a couple of years. And even though a lot of it is in progress, um, still, um, it is progressing, or a lot of it is progressing. So, uh, thank you again.
Thank you, Dave. And, um, you know, I think just to be clear, um, these, none of these are distinctly within a category. You know, there's a lot of overlap. And so, um, you know, just bring them up as they come up in your notes. Um, don't worry about.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I I think they cover multiple categories. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And now we'll go to Councilmember, uh, Healy and then Councilmember Posake.
Thank you. So, um, I just wanted to raise one, one line item in here in this section. And that's something that a couple of my colleagues have mentioned previously. Um, and that's number five, the Charter, um, Amendment, um, issue. Um, I I'm gonna just note that there have been cobwebs in the city charter since I first came on the city council, and we pretty much managed to work through them. There's a lot of pre Prop 13 language in there that we just ignore. Um, and a a full charter amendment is going to be a massive undertaking. Um, I I don't see a need to, with with one exception that I'll get to in a second, I don't see a need to undertake that before the general plan uh, is completed or the, um, uh, the new, uh, housing element is completed. The one thing that I do think we need to move forward on within that, and I didn't see this called out separately anywhere else, so I'll raise it here. And it doesn't need to be, it's it's a charter issue, but it doesn't need to be addressed by way of our charter amendment. There are other ways of dealing with it. And that is, as the council is where our charter specifies 10% retention on construction projects and state law specifies 5%. Um, we really need to get that straightened out as soon as possible, um, before we start spending a lot of Measure U funds on construction projects. And and I previously suggested following the model that Santa Rosa used for modifying its charter by going to court and saying, we have this provision that's not compatible with state law. That would be much more, uh, swift and, um, efficient. Um, that's an issue that we need to address. The other issues with the charter, I don't think are time sensitive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I see our city attorney's hand just went up, so I'm going to jump to him before I go to you, Councilmember Posake.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to respond to to, uh, Councilmember Healy's comment about the, um, the contract retention. Let me put my hand down. Um, I think we we're we're have looked at that issue and are implementing, and in fact, already did some interim implementation in a couple of the council's last award actions with respect to that item. I think we probably, it would be good to have a conversation with the council at a subsequent meeting. Um, I am still of the view that the the state law change is is not actually effective as to charter cities like Petalima. Um, there is a mechanism in the state law change, um, that that we can, um, deploy in future contract awards, um, that are that are complex, um, and therefore justify a higher retention. And and in others, I think we can make reference to the the state of the law, um, and the and the the home rule power that we deploy in the charter, um, that I don't, I think prevents the legislature from from essentially repealing, um, legislation like like our charter that was enacted under the home rule power, you know, decades ago. Um, but but that's good conversation to have, I think, with the council so that so that we address that as need be. Also, um, note that that provision is a is a relatively short-lived one. Um, I I don't know, maybe it was a trial balloon to see how much charter city angst caused. I don't know. But, um, so anyway, that's something for us to come back and talk about, I think, um, um, when when we when we can schedule that. But but just to let the council know that that we are very much looking at that already at the staff level and implementing strategies so that we don't have 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 problems with respect to our contracts as a result of those provisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, so now I'm going back to our council members and it's Councilmember Posake, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Hi, I guess, uh, first thing is that I have a question that I'm not, and I think it it's sort of been answered, but i- it is that, um, things that are listed as in progress, are they, um, on a rail where they are going to be until they're done at this point? Does that mean? Or are we resetting those priorities? Uh, in any case, I'm going to try to quickly go through a list of the of the, both some in-progress items and some not yet started items that are important to me and some already mentioned by some folks, uh, starting with, uh, item four. I really want to take a a real look at updating our impact fees. Uh, moving to maybe to item 18 and, um, some others that are associated with it in terms of, uh, coming closer to completion of our, uh, walking and biking trails, uh, um, I, uh, not that different from, um, the article that, uh, the Vice Mayor wrote a couple of weeks ago. Uh, for example, my own personal issue is getting my bike from, uh, say, Fifth and Western to, uh, uh, to the start of the Lynch Creek Trail on the other side of Petaluma Boulevard, uh, where I just, uh, have big concerns anytime I'm in that area. Anyway, um, next I'd go to item, uh, uh, 23, that I think's already been mentioned, uh, in terms of, uh, expanding transit. Really, you know, I I like the term reimagining our transit system and, uh, and maybe even reducing the routes to begin with, with more service on the ones that are actually, if any, are are getting used enough to do that. And then to, uh, uh, moving on to a couple of the new ones, number 158, um, improving race relations and policing, um, I just, I think it's very important that we keep, uh, uh, a close eye on what's happening there and, uh, you know, what we need to do in in council as time goes by to, uh, um, collaborate with that group. Uh, in terms of, uh, community engagement, there's some others that bear on this, but let's, you know, I'm I'm picking out, uh, uh, item number 161 and wondering if, um, if the city, I haven't heard this, but I could have missed it if someone just mentioned it, in terms of having a language line available, such as Santa Rosa does. I believe they use something called Language Line Solutions. And that, uh, anyone who wants to ask the city a question, uh, can get translation there to to do that. I'm wondering if we can't, uh, start to look at that as a new item as part of maybe 161. And finally, item number 170, in terms of updating the city telecommunications ordinance. Um, I think it's important to proceed with that. So those are my issues. And, uh, I really, I I again want to want to thank the, uh, staff for everything that has been accomplished in these last two years, as well as, um, my relay, my my concerns about burnout as well amongst our staff. And and I think it's very important for us to look at a, uh, a wellness program, uh, of some sort. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now we'll hear from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll echo the the compliments of staff. I think one of the things for me being a new council member is getting the the weekly update emails from the departments and just seeing how much goes into accomplishing each of these goals and how much work is going on every week. Um, and I'm constantly humbled and and appreciative of the work that is done every day. Um, a couple of thoughts when I when I looked at this. Um, goal seven, I think it'd be interesting to, um, add financing and not just grants. I think there's more of an opportunity to think about, um, actual financing and private sector work there. Um, goal 14, the crosstown connectors. I I'm excited to hear what the update is on Caulfield. I also think we need to look at Corona. You know, we've got a a white ghost bike on Corona right now because, um, it's just not safe. And we're about to put a train station there and a lot more families moving in there. Um, and I think that we need to take a hard look at Corona. And, um, especially with the, hopefully Biden bucks slowing down, that, um, old roads, um, will be, uh, will be high on the list, I think, when it comes to shovel ready. So I think we really need to to think hard about adding Corona to our crosstown connector update. I'll echo the comments on the charter. I'll, I don't know all of the the ins and outs of it, but I definitely like the idea of updating our charter. On the the facilities, it's goal 167, completed facilities assessment. One of the things that's been, uh, burning for me is with the, I'll say scarcity of land and our desire to not expand our urban growth boundary. And and that all of our emergency, uh, you know, our police station, our fire stations all need to be redone. Um, I don't know, and we were talking about City Hall. I just don't know that we should be taking for granted that all of them are going to be where they are. And so, um, you know, looking at energy projects, whether it's energy efficiency or solar at those emergent, uh, that are, um, at those, any city facility, if we're not sure that it's going to be there in 10 years, um, or that it's coming out of the general plan, if we're not going to move it somewhere, um, we might be putting the cart before the horse a little bit on that. And then, one that's kind of an overarching thing, and it's been mentioned a little bit. one that's kind of an overarching thing and it's been mentioned a little bit, but it probably fits best into well, it fits into multiple, so I'm just going to say it, but I think community engagement and empowering our committees and commissions, especially as we staff up, it'd be great to do more working with the community. And I have one specific example where I was part of the ad hoc group, the community group that worked on the climate framework. And it was just a really enriching experience to work with so many members of the community that have different types of expertise. I think Councilmember Postacay also worked on a section of that too. And it was empowering. And it was empowering to see the work in front of council, even though I got to vote on it afterwards, but I think that we should be doing more of that because when we start thinking about in particular, things like active transportation or there's some other ones coming down the line around cultural engagement and recreation and things. The work of community members and having community members really closely tied into the process and the work of staff is going to be really important to making things a success. So that's mine. In terms of a specific goal that I'd like to see is an ad hoc focused on active transportation and just dedicated to looking at the, not just the opportunities for infrastructure changes and quick build projects, which everybody knows that I'm a supporter of, but also how do we get people out? So a monthly bike night to have five hundred Petaluma residents riding bikes on a common path. It's a great way to show people the trails in, you know, in absence of really good signage and things like that. It's a good way to get people out. And I think that we'll just be way more effective if it's being led by various different groups in the community than just focused on infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. And I see Councilmember Fisher and Councilmember Postacay have their hands up again.
Before we take a second bite of this apple, do you want to make comments?
No, you go ahead. I'll wait.
All right. Okay, so back to number fourteen. Crosstown connectors. So it's sort of, it feels like the elephant in the room. And I think we really need to have another study session on crosstown connectors because as we update our general plan, the question is, are we going to keep Rainier in the plan and are we going to keep using it as a mitigation for our traffic? It clearly hasn't been built. I don't foresee it being built in my lifetime. And so I would like to see us take a look at that. And I agree with Councilmember Barnacle that we need to really focus on Caulfield and Corona as our crosstown connectors. And then I do have one item that actually covers all five goals and it would be really nice to really prioritize those items that do leverage all five goals. And that is, I really want to see us develop a parks master plan. And just like the Climate Action Framework Plan that was done in coordination with the community, I think that we should really engage the community in that parks master plan. Because as we, again, as we update our general plan and our housing element, you know, I think we've seen over the last year with the pandemic, the incredible need that we have to provide opportunities for our citizens and others to recreate outside. And, you know, we're relying on a very old model and old parks that, you know, never were planned in totality. And so I'd really like to see us work on that and look at our skate park, look at our tennis courts, look at all of our recreation facilities, look at our open spaces, look at our our facilities and really come up with a robust plan. So we're not sort of working on things piecemeal as we have the funding to do so. In particularly, as was mentioned, as the Biden funding comes down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Postacay, did you put your hand down?
Yes, I'm sorry. I left it up by accident.
Oh, okay, okay. Didn't catch that. Sorry. Okay, so, you know, several, I have several items, most of which have been covered, which is always good. But I also have on my list, along with Councilmember King and Healy, the update to the city charter. And I also think that it's, you know, I understand why it hasn't been done, you know, because it's going to take a tremendous amount of attorney time and that's money. And those are two things that we don't have enough of right now, in my opinion. But I do see the charter update as also speaking to the question of diversity, equity and inclusion. Because right now we have a city council that is paid five dollars a meeting and ten dollars for the mayor. So, but capped at a certain amount as well, which really precludes many, many people in our community who might want to take part in city government from doing so because they just can't afford it. And so if indeed we really want to change the color of the people who are sitting on the dais, whether it's virtual or in real time, I do really think we're going to need to address the question of recompense for people on the council, people who do this work. So I just want to throw that in as another reason why we need to look at our charter. I also agree with Councilmember Postacay's comment on number one seventy about the cell tower ordinance, I think is absolutely a very high priority of getting that done soon. And you know, I see that item number thirteen and item one seventy-seven, I think, sort of dovetail with each other in that I really feel that, you know, new electeds and appointees need to have all the kind of training that makes them better representatives for our city, you know, A B one, two, three, four, anti-sex harassment as well as city, you know, operation protocols, things like that, that I think we have because we just haven't had the staff to do it, we've been a little bit neglectful on. So I think, I think I see that in being brought up in one seventy-seven, I can see that the city staff is aware of that and wants to address that as well. What I really wasn't clear about, and I'm still not, is there are several things that have not been initiated and some because I know, I know it's because of money or it hasn't been possible to do that. But there's other ones that I'm wondering whether or not staff just thinks they're not not really feasible or, you know, if their time has come and gone. I just, you know, I'm not certain what has caused these not to even be initiated. So perhaps whoever is going to speak next might want to talk about that, or maybe the city manager or assistant city manager because they do exist on several. So with that, I see our city manager has her hand up and then when she speaks, we're going to go to public comment.
The Mayor, I'm just going to speak to these because they're right in front of my face and I can't imagine, all of these are, all of these are priorities. As a matter of fact, one is actually mislabeled. The one on the post-meeting summaries is, has been started and that should say ongoing. So there's one, two, three, four, five. And I'm just going to say, we just don't have the bandwidth. We barely have the bandwidth to do what we're doing and that's why a lot of things that are in progress have stayed in progress because we can't get the traction on it. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but this past thirteen months has been, it's been a separate job in itself. So that's why we've left them and we've added on. But these are all very, very important to our efficiency as an organization. And I would also say that one of them, the enterprise management system, we have proposed in our budget. So you'll see some movement shortly on some of these.
Okay. Thank you. And that certainly wasn't a criticism. That was a request for an explanation. So with that, I will ask our city clerk if she has received any mail regarding this workshop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received nineteen public comments that have been posted to the website with the agenda packet. And a few more comments have been trickling in during the meeting. We'll get those posted first thing tomorrow with the agenda packet.
Okay, thank you. And so now I will turn it to our moderator, Patrick Carter, who will talk to the people who are in attendance who would like to speak to items on this part of the agenda only.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public, raise your hand in Zoom and we'll call on you in turn. We're doing this a little bit different from other council meetings for the fifty-one of you that are in the audience in Zoom right now. We're going to be doing one minute per session. So this one will have one minute, the next section will have one minute. And members of the public that can speak on all items, so you could, if you have comments on every single section, all five of them, you'll have up to five minutes total. So even though, you know, we're trying to get, we know there's a lot of people that want to talk on these issues, so one minute per section. And then we'll go from there. So I see hands being raised. I'm going to share my screen. And we currently have seven hands raised. The first speaker, and again, the timer is set for one minute and just like our normal council meetings, attendees will be muted when their time expires or when their comments have concluded, whichever comes first. And just a reminder that speakers are encouraged to be respectful and that threats of violence and insanity are grounds for removal from this meeting. And again, this is just comments on the current section. There'll be more time later to provide comments in those other sections. So our first speaker is Janice Cater Thompson, followed by Eric Leland. Janice, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Great, thank you. I actually got on late to the meeting, but I just want to talk quickly about Rainier. You know, what we're hearing in the Argus Courier is John Burns, the last publisher and the last editor, continues pushing the Rainier project. We, the public deserves to know what the cost of this project is, the feasibility of this project, instead of letting John Burns manipulate the story. It's, you know, I'm looking at a fire station in Rona Park that was twenty-one million, now it's forty-one million. The price is going up on all of the materials. The public has a right to understand transportation and not hear it from John Burns, the ex-publisher of the Argus Courier. We need to have honesty and that's what we're really looking for tonight. And also, as far as skateboard parks, I want to just say Lori Shea, a past city council member, was the one that actually got that original park built. And there are a lot of kids that use skateboard parks and I would really love to see that when the fairgrounds expands to expand that park. And I
All right. I'm sorry, sorry about that, Janice. As you can see, the one minute goes really fast in these. So just encouraging folks to really get to the main subject really quickly on this. So apologize for that, Janice. Next speaker is Eric Leland, followed by Sheila Baker. Eric, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, everyone and staff for putting all this information. This is a comment on item eleven, training, item thirty-nine, leveraging technology. We need a stronger capacity to use data to inform equitable policy decisions. Currently, we don't know enough information about what populations a policy or investment will serve and whether we're truly reaching our disadvantaged residents. We saw this last week in the Measure M Parks budget funding. Lots of money allocated, no information about who we're serving with that money. Use data to visualize Petaluma's as we are multi-generational, multiracial, varied socioeconomic status, different safety, health and environmental contexts. Let's map these projects against this. Who are we over-serving and underserving? I want to triple underscore the master plan for parks that Councilmember Fisher brought up. We need to move forward with that right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sheila Baker, followed by Ben Peters. Sheila, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember King that we really need routing help with our transit. The whole west side and south side are not really served. And it doesn't do any good to have new buses and fancy buses and electric buses if people aren't riding them. And there are a lot of essential workers. I know I live on Spring and Douglas and there are a lot of essential workers around here and especially in the healthcare, the seniors rehab centers. So I would like to see routing improvement with the transit and really get some buses out here for all ages, not just the high schoolers, but all ages and people who really, really need buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Next speaker is Ben Peters, followed by Mary Beth Leland. Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thanks, everyone. Just want to echo the comment about financing. So at the United Nations Climate Change Summit and the most recent Earth Day, the Secretary General of the United Nations emphasized the need for all levels of civil society and government to better utilize financing. I don't have time to go into the missed opportunities that the city has had to utilize practical, cost-effective, cash flow generating financing, but we need to do this moving forward. This is a goal of our city and it should be a goal of how we use our Measure M funds. On an important unrelated note, I'd just like to give a shout out to the City of Petaluma Open Data Platform. That was one of the best presentations the city has put out from the Technology Committee. I look forward to the Open Data Platform that identifies EV.
About that, Ben. Next speaker is Mary Beth Leland, followed by Anne Edmister. Mary Beth, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, thank you. My big push tonight is to ask you to please consider more accountability on how our tax dollars are spent, in particular in music parks in rec department, as I've been learning more recently about public input into their budget. So I'm asking that the accountability includes transparency, a community needs assessment, the one you requested two years ago and still haven't received from them, and copious public input. We need to address community concerns around equity and inclusion that were not addressed at our most recent parks meeting. I know this council highly values those practices as they've been outlined in this plan and spoken about this evening and in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anne Edmister, followed by Joseph. And you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Just three quick points I wanted to make. First of all, and this is under the umbrella of City Works for Everyone, that I would like to see dedicated staff for climate work. At least one full-time equivalent. Secondly, I want to echo the comments about needing to see our streets becoming bike and pedestrian safe. And then finally, I want to encourage our city leadership to include a Native lands acknowledgement at the beginning of every meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Next speaker is Joseph, followed by Susan Kirks. Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to also agree with the city parks master plan. I think that's a great idea. I think it also brings to light how important our open spaces and our parks are, including the fairgrounds. I think we need to have more emphasis on how important the fairgrounds is to the city community. And I think that the city council has not done what's necessary to get the entire community involved in this big decision of continuing their contract. It's an area that everyone can use and everybody would like to use. The more you talk to people, the more hurt and upset they are that the city council is thinking about not continuing that contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by Marjorie Tarr. Susan, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to support the comments about focusing on both Corona and Caulfield for crosstown connectors and being prepared for potential federal funds that may be coming. I thought that was an excellent suggestion. And it's really interesting that a Parks Master Plan is being brought up. So I thought I'd just like to say that as the only member of the public who's attended the Parks and Rec Commission meetings for, I guess, eight, nine, ten years maybe, often the only person there sitting through the entire meeting. I was really glad to see members of the public attend the last meeting. And I know that Vice Mayor Barnacle and his energy are helping with that. But what I would like to say is for those of us who've been in the community for long, for many, many years, for me, twenty-one, with a deep experience in open space and issues like that, there's a lot to learn about, and it's really good to know about his-
Sorry about that, Susan. Next speaker is Marja Tar, followed by Josh Simmons. Marja, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Great, thank you very much. I'm Marja Tar. I'm Chair of Petaluma's Ped and Bike Committee, commonly referred to as P-Bike. However, please note that I'm speaking for myself. Petaluma has embraced a twenty-thirty carbon-neutral goal, calling for the significant reduction of VMT by stressing walking, biking, and other forms of active transportation. Petaluma is also supporting SCTA's Vision Zero Plan, calling for the end of traffic fatalities, be them auto, bike, pedestrian, or a combination. How do we meet these lofty goals? We may need to get more folks out of cars and onto foot and bike. To be successful, we need to provide for enjoyable but safe and connected and clearly marked routes for this increased bike and ped use. To start, we need to fund the Bike and Ped Master Plan and the new Wayfaring Plan and signage, both of which are currently sitting in CIP.
All right, thank you, Marja. Sorry about cutting people off. I apologize. Next speaker is Josh Simmons, followed by Aiden Sharkey. Josh, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. I'm speaking with respect to work item number thirty around committees. I really, really appreciate seeing that line item about committee empowerment. A few things I wanted to add to in that area. And I wanted to both recognize the work that is going into language access and ask for that work to continue, to see translations for the meetings, but ultimately the materials and agendas as well. I know I'm already seeing some of that happen, and I want to thank the city manager and city staff for making it happen. I also would like to ask for more, more lead time on agenda materials where possible and more support so that the crowded committee schedule doesn't mean that some committees are kept from meeting more frequently. And I would ask for more trainings for committees as well. I know all of this translates to staff empowerment as well. So that's really what I'm asking for with this comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Aiden Sharkey, followed by Blake Hooper. Aiden, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments. Aiden is using an older version of Zoom. Okay, this is going to be a little bit trickier. Aiden, I'm promoting you to panelists, where you'll be able to unmute yourself.
Awesome, yeah. Hope everybody's having a good evening. I'm just a big advocate for a new skate park. I know that we've had our skate park for a very long time, around thirty to forty years. It's pretty outdated, and I know that it's just not fun to skate anymore. A while back, like a year ago, I attended a city meeting, and there was a lot of talk about a new skate park, but nothing was really done past that. And I think it'd be a big benefit to the community in the way that a lot of kids will stop street skating and get off of areas where we're not allowed to be or meant to be, I would say. So that's basically all it, from me. I just hope that that could get done soon or in the next couple of years. I think it would be really helpful.
Thank you, Aiden. And thank you back to attendee. Okay, next speaker is Blake Hooper, followed by John Hanania. Blake, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello. I just wanted to echo the comments from earlier, calling for both the emphasis on a multimodal transit and also service route revitalization. Wanted to also underscore Council Member Fisher's call for a master plan for our parks and recreation facilities. And I also wanted to agree with previous comments pushing for the connectors at Corona and Caulfield. Rainier passed when I was a child, and it's still gone nowhere. So further discussion about the project feels a little deceptive at this point. And on the discussion regarding amendments to the charter, it would be helpful to the public if there was a little bit clearer of a discussion on what that process looks like and what the amendments or proposed amendments might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Skylar Silver. John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good evening. Well, several things I'd like to point out. One, it seems like you guys do a lot of time and effort and reports and workshops and talk and very little work done over the years, not year after year after year. Another thing that it's really hard for me to understand, how is it that every neighbor and city around us is able to do a safety center, a new police station, fire station, several fire stations, but not Petaluma? Is it a poor management, current and previously? Because people are spending tax money the same as Petaluma and other neighbor and city. You know, Rona Park's got a real nice facility. Santa Fe's got a beautiful facility, which is, I encourage you to go and visit. But I don't understand why Petaluma doesn't have the fun to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John. Next speaker is Skylar Silver, followed by Stacy Earl. Skylar, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm calling on behalf of the Petaluma skateboarding community. And I just want to agree with everyone in saying that our skate park is outdated for sure. I still enjoy skating there, but going to skate parks like Napa and Sebastopol and other parks in other areas of Sonoma County, it's, our skate park is just widely outdated, and we have a big skate community here with a lot of, you know, pros even that come, and we want to be proud of what we have to offer them. So I just want to speak my part in saying that we should go ahead and move forward with updating our skate park. And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Skylar. Next speaker is Stacy Earl, followed by Mina Stess. Stacy, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. My comment is directed to the public, to how the public space funds are used and dispersed throughout our city. I understand that the department is still underfunded from the recession of two thousand and eight. However, we still need to have a plan and have transparency about how millions of dollars are being spent. From what I gathered at the last Parks and Recreation meeting, there has been a lot of attention paid to what type of recreation is provided for. There has not been a lot of attention paid to what type of recreation is provided for teenagers. They simply fall under the category of youth. However, a fourteen-year-old is certainly too old for a playground structure, but what else is offered? The skate park is offered, yet it's overcrowded, lacks shade, and has no sort of rest area that most parks have in this town. Right now, there's a very small amount of money that's allocated, and the price tag of building something new is very large. While that may seem like a reason to scrap it, I believe that our youth needs places like skate parks. It gives them a safe place to congregate, move-
Sorry about cutting you off, Stacy. Our next speaker is Mina Stess, followed by Stefan. Mina, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
My comment is about the skate park as well. I think it'd be really good for the community to have a place to go, because the skate park right now isn't, I wouldn't say is the most safest place, especially for COVID as well. And skating on the streets can anger like a lot of the businesses. And there are some places to go, like the Phoenix Theater, but I think having like a safer place and a skate park for everyone, for the community, would be way better. And I do a lot of competitive skateboarding as well, and I come down to Southern California a lot and go to Napa and all those skate parks. And I think it'd be really good to have a place in Petaluma as well, especially just for the skate community, because it's grown a lot over years, and it used to be like really small. And now it is big, and I think it just would be really good for everyone and all the kids.
Thank you, Mina. Next speaker is Stefan, followed by M. Ann Sullivan. Stefan, you may unmute yourself.
Hi there. I'm a Petaluma resident for the last thirty-four years. And I've been an avid skateboarder, and I feel like our skate park is definitely outdated when compared to places like Nevada, especially Napa and Sebastopol. And it would just be great to have a little bit more space, because I do see quite a few collisions occur when I do go to Petaluma Skate Park, because the size is pretty small. And nobody likes to get hurt, so having a place with like more space and new obstacles to hit would be great and ideal. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is M. Ann Sullivan, followed by Matt Sharkey. And M. Ann Sullivan, you may unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to go on record for greatly opposing the Rainier Connector, whose massive concrete footers would be situated in our river wetlands. Per the San Francisco Estuary Institute, ninety-eight percent of our Petaluma wetlands are gone in our watershed. I would like us instead to focus on Caulfield and Corona for the crosstown connectors, and to also focus on removing curb cuts along Washington that considerably slow traffic. As several of our former city council members have said, no one should expect to shoot around our town in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Matt Sharkey, followed by Luca W. So Matt, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yeah, thank you. I want to first and foremost thank all the youth that are speaking up at this meeting this evening in support of the skate park. I too attended the meeting a little over a year and a half ago with both of my sons, where I saw an incredible show of force from the community's youth showing up and voicing their opinions about updating our outdated skate park. And then a little disenfranchised that there was no follow-up from the Parks and Rec or the city in a communication to the youth that showed up there and participated in the process and made their voices heard, understanding of COVID and the world we've been living in. But if we give the youth a platform and don't follow up with them, they will be disenfranchised and will not participate at a city level where we value them and need their participation. So I'd like greater communication going forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Matt. Next speaker is Luca W., followed by Erin Daly. Luca, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, my name is Luca Wolsey, and I'm a person who lives here and also a skater who lives here. And my, I'm going to end this. I, yeah, I can't.
Okay, we'll move on then to Erin Daly. Erin, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yeah, hi, and thanks for, thanks for everything you're doing on the climate. I just wanted to echo some of the comments we made earlier. It'd be great to see at least one full FTE appointed to climate. I also just want to share that last year I was hit by a car on my bicycle in, in just riding around the city, and I know I'm not alone. It's very dangerous to ride around this city on bicycle. And, you know, if we want to get people to ride their bicycles, we absolutely have to address that so that we can allow people to get from A to B safely. So I'd want to put my, my name behind that. And again, yeah, just thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Erin. And Hannah has the hand up. So Hannah, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, I would like, also like to echo everyone's statement about a Parks Master Plan. Our parks in this community are failing. They're under maintained. They're no longer safe. I'm not talking about playgrounds. I'm talking about playing fields, the skate park. There's not room for people to move around and skate freely. While we're redoing the streets over at McNear, I would like to see the purple piping go in for reused water to help water the park. And just timing the traffic lights in town would help alleviate the traffic issues we have. It's like green light, but your light's red, and no one gets anywhere, makes any progress. Also, super thankful for the youth speaking up tonight. It's really great to hear all their voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. And Marja, I see your hands up again, but we're only doing one time, so I'm going to-
If I could interrupt Patrick, this is the mayor. Marja, let me know that that is actually her husband Fred, who wants to speak. So I think we can let a second person speak.
Okay. So Marja's husband, if you could please state your name for the record and unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yes, thank you very much. This is Fred Tar. I'm on the Transit Committee, and I'm also on the Chair of the Ad hoc Transit and Ped Bike, E-Bike Commuter Committee. And I'm encouraging the council to in, go ahead with the wayfinding plan for the bike paths and bike routes in the city of Petaluma. It would so much enhance the program that we're working on to provide for e-bike riders coming into the city. So thank you for your time, and also thank you for your commitment.
Thank you for those comments. And I see a T-Ned. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to talk about the Petaluma Skate Park. And I, I think that it's pretty outdated, and it would be really great to see a new park come into the area. I think it would bring a lot of people around, like other skaters. Right now, everyone kind of disperses to other skate scenes. But it'd be cool to bring our community back to a skate community, and I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And Madam Mayor, that's the last hand raised, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. With that public comment on that item is closed, but if you have something you'd like to say, feel free to contact the city at thecityofpetaluma.org/goals to add your comments, or you can email our city cleric at thecityofpetaluma.org, and they will all be included. I'd like to call on our city manager and then our vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first thank all of the speakers regarding the skate park. And I wanted to address Mr. Sharkey, his comments. Those comments last year, or I guess it's been over a year ago at our Measure M workshop, did not go unheard or unlistened to. We have, you know, we tried really hard to get Measure U passed, and now that we are in a better financial situation, we actually have a CIP proposed for a budget cycle for a new skate park or for a skate park design. So just want to let you know that we heard you. We so appreciate your engagement, and we are super excited to get a skate park for our, our teens and our youth that isn't called the Spleen Remover anymore. So we don't want to have that distinction. Thank you.
No. Vice Mayor Barnacle.
Yeah, that's a great entree to, to my response to on the skate park. As a person who used to be over there talking at the council and asking for things, I really appreciate it when people show up. I appreciated the people who showed up at the Parks Meeting. One of the things that was mentioned, I believe, at the Parks Meeting was that the hundred and fifty K that we have for a skate park design is, might not be enough for the design, and I think that we should do two things tonight. I would really like to see is, one, add the skate park as a goal and make sure that whatever the cost is, that getting the design where it needs to be is done. So that if there are Biden- So that if there are Biden bucks for recreation, where we've got a shovel-ready skate park project and, or we can go out and find some big donors or something like that. But I would really like to make sure that we don't shortcut the design process so that we're really ready to, ready to go and move forward with that. In terms of, you know, the skate park, I would love to, to explore alternative locations and not just think that it has to be right there. I've shared with the city manager in one of our meetings that that little triangle sliver piece of land over by Corona Station might make for an interesting skate park. And we'd be attracting youth from all over Sonoma and Marin County to take the Smart Train and come hang out at our skate park right there, buy coffee at our coffee shop all day and then go home. So that's my, my spiel on the skate park. And I really appreciate everybody who's getting engaged. And you're heard. If there's one thing I want to push forward to skate park right now because I'm just so moved by the participation. I want to appreciate Patrick for cutting people off at one minute and doing it so politely and very easy. I want to acknowledge that I didn't hear a single comment about filling potholes or, or I heard a couple about traffic actually, but street safety is, is a much bigger issue. To Chair Tarr's comment, I want to make sure that we're funding P-back on everything they need because we will never hit our climate goals if we aren't giving P-back every resource they say they need and doing all the things we can to, to do that. So I, I really want to lean into that. I appreciated the mayor's comments about payment for city council. I know that's, that is a barrier for a lot of people and we're not gonna, not gonna have representation if we don't start, we don't consider that. I also think district elections are a good thing. Why, it's not lost on me that we're a bunch of Westside dudes representing the entire city and I would support district elections in Petaluma. Echo the Parks Master Plan. And then I think that the, the comments about the open data portal from Mr. Peters, but also the data informed policy from Mr. Leland. I really appreciate both of those. And I just, I know that we're gonna keep, keep growing our dataset and growing the information that we have. And let's keep that as a priority and an on-growing priority because the data that we're going to continue to get is is, is going to be rich and, and knowing how to use it and really leaning in with our our committees and our commissions and giving that to them. Creating ad hocks so that they can do the work and roll up their sleeves. I think it's a, an excellent opportunity. That's my comments.
Thank you. So now we're going to go on to goal two, and this is our environmental legacy. And I think anybody who was listening to several of the people who spoke from the public, there was already, you can see the overlapping between a city that works and environmental legacy and places and spaces. So I, I think we will continue to see that. But this time we're going to be trying to concentrate on the environmental legacy aspect. And we will have our planning manager Heather Hines and our senior management analyst, Patrick Carter, teeing up this section.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. That was a great kickoff with our first goal. So I'm going to try to run through some slides quickly, but know really that a lot of the meat of what is in front of us is the discussion. So if there's anything that I can circle back on, please, please let me know. Not trying to be too brief, but at the same time, want to, want to leave the time for the community discussion. So our second goal is our environmental legacy. And this goal addresses preserving and protecting the environment. Emphasizes becoming a leader in this way. And then touches specifically on protecting our river and open space, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and mandating sustainable development. This, this goal really crosses all departments with the city. It also really resonates as something that the Petaluma community needs to come together towards this common goal in order for it to be successful. Next slide, please. And so, again, kind of following the same format as the first goal. We're looking at, you know, what, what does a picture of success look like with this goal? What are we trying to achieve? And what does this goal encompass? So these are some of the objectives. All of them kind of labeled under climate ready, which you're going, you're going to see, you know, behind many of us. And you're going to hear often through this presentation. So with the support of the council and our Climate Action Commission, we've been able to achieve a lot with this goal. And we also have been able to pivot and learn new things as we're working on this goal. So some of the things, our carbon neutral goal of 2030 are, and we're calling it a climate action framework, but I believe it's the climate emergency framework. Uh, you know, establishing our Climate Action Commission, which was one of the goals in, in the hundred and fifty-seven work plans items was establishing that commission. And not only did we establish that commission, but we have adopted the climate emergency framework. Also includes, you know, water conservation, which is really at the top of the list right now with the, the drought situation we find ourselves in. And touching on what I mentioned about this really being a community goal, the community education and, and engagement is really a key part of this. Uh, next goal, please. Our next slide. So as we did pivot and tried to remain agile, we've worked on both items that were in the goals from February of 2020, but also things that weren't necessarily explicitly outlined in that, but were aligned with our environmental legacy goal. So again, climate framework was not listed as one of those work plan items. Definitely one of our top milestones in the past year. Updating our pest management plan, committing to the carbon neutral by 2030. We did our natural, our natural gas ban through our code updates is something we're working on, but also be our gas station prohibition that we recently adopted. What else was I going to bring up? Oh, beginning electrifying our city fleet. That is in progress and we continue to look each time we're looking to purchase a new vehicle or a new piece of equipment, looking at the options. And divestment of fossil fuel investments, which the council recently discussed at a meeting. So really, these are to ensure that the city is, is walking the walk, talking the talk, partnering with our community and really working as hard and as quickly as we can to meet this goal based on the carbon neutrality. A goal that we've set.
Heather, just to jump in really quick, just really want to underscore what you said earlier about this being cross-departmental. They're champions in each of our departments. It's not a struggle to find people that are interested in working on environmental projects on our team. There's many people that are committed. You know, a lot of us have families here. And, you know, we're, we're part of the community too, and, and we want to see these changes to protect the environment as well. So it, I definitely heard the community members requesting a full-time position dealing with, with climate. And I believe that's going to be part of the upcoming budget. But it's, it, it's not like these things aren't happening with the absence of that person. There, there are a lot of people very committed on this subject. So just wanted to just put an underscore on that because your comment was spot on.
Yeah, and it's really one of the things that as staff members are looking at the things, maybe we start with what's on that list. And as we get into something, you kind of, there's, there's so many great ideas. There's so many things we could be doing. There's so many other ways. It's, you know, you get, you get sidetracked sometimes by, or we could do this, or we could do that. So I agree that I, I think there is a lot of excitement on staff to be doing more and more. And it's really, how quickly can we get it done? How quickly can we bring it forward? How many different ideas can we, can we put into place? Next slide, please. So looking at our major accomplishments, the climate emergency framework and then the climate ready campaign. This is really our start. It's evolving. We're working closely with the Climate Action Commission on what that climate ready campaign is going to look like. But really, it's an effort to try to get everyone who wants to get involved, involved, taking new ideas and really meet it with excitement. The biomass to biofuel project, the prohibition on new gas stations, the polystyrene ban. And I believe in July of this year, the city will be fully transitioned to the Sonoma Clean Power Evergreen program. And as was previously mentioned, I believe by Councilmember King, at your next meeting, you will be considering all electric codes. So really a lot happening. Petaluma is leading. It's very exciting to speak with other jurisdictions. You know, I, I know a lot of you saw all the attention in the media about our gas station ban and being the first in the country to do that. So I just, I feel very optimistic that we are leading and we're poised to gain more traction in the coming year. So next slide. So really looking again at, Jason, I believe is going to pull up the spreadsheet, looking at what we've accomplished, what's in progress, what hasn't been initiated and talking about what is still relevant, what needs to be added, removed, delayed. And then obviously, I believe our subsequent meeting will be looking at kind of prioritization of those items.
Great. Thank you, Heather. And I'll, we'll go ahead and pull up the spreadsheet again.
And kind of looking as Councilmember Fisher brought up, what has not been initiated. There was only a couple, I believe, that haven't been initiated. One was requiring new development to participate in the Evergreen program. And what we have determined is that legally we not, cannot require them to do that. We do speak with applicants during the development review process, encourage them. We have had a couple applicants voluntarily agree to a condition to that. But, but that is not something that we move forward after getting legal feedback that that was not not legally defensible. Let's see, the other thing not initiated is the single use. And that was, just has not been initiated just due to, I think, sheer staffing resources during the pandemic. And then the other thing was creating a tool or dashboard that tracks city progress on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And again, I believe that's just been a a consequence of COVID and kind of redistributing resources to address things. And I believe, oh, oh, and the investigating ways to allow homeowners or residents to use the right-of-way for EV charging stations. This is something that came up, especially in some of our older neighborhoods where people may not have garages or even driveways at times to pull their car off the street at night and to install a EV charger on private property. We did some time ago, look into a pilot program that Berkeley had initiated. And we had started looking at that. So that is still an option. We just haven't, again, with staff resources, we just haven't taken that all the way. But if that, if that continues to be a priority, we have done some like initial research and looking into that, but it hasn't formally been initiated.
And these other three that are highlighted in green are goals that have come up subsequent to the last discussion on this. And these, all three of these were specifically discussed and brought forth as recommendations from the Climate Action Commission when they presented the climate emergency framework to council as well. These were items that they requested priority, a priority look on them. There were fifteen of them. So we're just seeing the three that have not either been completed or initiated at this point out of those fifteen that were recommended by the Climate Action Commission.
Right. And the emergency moratorium on all floodplain development. While we haven't initiated that specifically, and I do believe that the council saw the letter that kind of came from the state on that, it is something that is definitely part of the discussion with the general plan kickoff. So that, that is something that while a moratorium has not been initiated at this time, that discussion of development in the floodplain in riparian areas. We have also initiated some new getting under contract to do new floodplain modeling to look at that with the updated models. So that will very much inform as we, as we further discussion about development in those areas and, and any future regulations to limit that more than we currently have on the books. So I'm, I'm here along with my colleagues to help answer any questions if, if there are any with these and to receive your feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both for that. And I was actually taking notes while you were speaking, so I didn't see whose hand went up first. But I am going to start with Councilmember Fisher, just because. And then I'll go to Council, the Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Healy, Kang, and Posseke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in terms of the wetlands, I've noticed that as projects have come through that we have a policy of allowing people to actually pay into a fund in order to mitigate the loss of wetlands. And I would like us to look at whether we can change that policy and actually capture the benefits of having the wetlands in our community. So is that something without a moratorium, understanding that that, that's an issue? But are there other things that we can do, like looking at that, that piece of legislation ordinance that we have to see if we can make changes to it so that we benefit here locally? And also, can we evaluate our tree ordinance? Because the same thing, if we're going to meet these ambitious goals, we've got to start sequestering carbon. Or at least leave the trees in place that are ours already sequestering that carbon. So again, taking a look at our tree replacement ordinance to see if there are changes that need to be made there. So that we're not waiting. I, I know that during the general plan update process, everybody knows that we're actually going to be creating, taking that climate framework, action plan, emergency plan, and generating an actual plan and an action plan. But we don't have two years. And so these are a couple of things we can do. And the single-use plastics ban, it was joined with the polystyrene ordinance, as I recall, and then we pulled them apart, unfortunately. And I know we've been waiting on that because of the pandemic and restaurants and and our single-use plastic uses have gone up significantly. But as we, you know, pivot out of the, out of the pandemic, it's, I think it's going to be a prime opportunity to, to move that legislation forward. We have it. It's just really, I think, a matter of educating the public at this point. And, and I noticed there was a line item forty-nine of, of looking at more solar panels, particularly Ellis Creek. I know Councilmember King, this has been on his list for years, looking at floating solar because that is the facility that uses the most electricity that we have as a city. And then lastly, while I take a deep breath, while we, we do have the changes to our code moving forward so that we are going to have all electric buildings for new construction, it's not really a reach code. And, and we talked about this at the last Planning Commission meeting when that item came before us. And looking at a new reach code, and maybe it's just sort of a continual process, so keep staff really busy. But we talked about things like having a maximum in terms of the number of parking spaces we have. Having more requirements for sustainable building materials. And, and that was included in our staff report as a letter from, again, Pete Gang and Ed, and Edmundster, who know a lot about these things. And then do we have any requirements for how housing is sited so that we can take advantage of passive energy uses? And then finally, increasing the requirements for EV charging stations. And I, and I know that there are a number of other things that can be- And I, and I know that there are a number of other things that can be on a reach code and um would like us to, to explore those. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, thank you for all the work that's gone into getting us here to the staff. My request is on goal two oh five. Um, I know uh we're not going to have a um an ordinance that talks about mandatory budget reductions. Um, this, you know, in the next few weeks. But I really hope that we can initiate that for the budget process. Um, because when we're approving a budget to spend money, we're also approving a budget to burn carbon. And I really want to know how much carbon we're, we're planning to burn when we, when we approve our budget. And that's um, I hope, I don't think that should be too hard. I've, I've talked to some people and it shouldn't be, but if we can just do half of it, just so that we can start with the reporting, I, I think that would be great. Um, I'm really excited to see us using translation more and more. Um, and just in general, just adopting new practices under Peggy, your leadership and, and staff's willingness to to evolve with the times is ever-present. And it's um, it's just really exciting to see us adopting new, new things, trying new things, engaging new people and in so many different ways, whether it's climate equity, you know, ev- everything, Chief Savano on the, on policing um and, and race relations. I just, it's, it feels great to be on the council right now. It really does. It feels like this is a, a really exciting time to, to be making change. Um, I'm going to give my, my two thumbs up on the glyphosate ban. Um, it's a small thing, but I, I'd love to see us ban leaf blowers. Um, and actually uh go a step farther. And I, someone mentioned to me a couple, a couple days ago, maybe a week ago, the idea of when we purchase um yard equipment and we're purchasing our own electric yard equipment, we could purchase five extras and maybe start like a, a tool lending library or something at the library in town or something to try and um, you know, just make, make these things available for people. Um, I was really excited to read the strategy on the urban growth boundary and folding that in. So it was, you know, great strategy there. Um, I liked what Councilmember Fisher said about the um the wetlands and what we can do to maybe just disallow uh woodland trading and paying in for that. And the, you know, there's some mention about the, uh, about a climate campaign here, the climate-ready campaign. Um, I'm really excited for that. And I, I, I just want to give, feel like there's a lot of energy because it touches so many different things. And um it's more than just communications, it's mechanics, it's messengers, it's all of that. And it's, it's going to require all of us as city leaders um to be really driving that message through and engaging the community groups. It goes to my, my prior point about community engagement. And it's um, it's, it's exciting and it's an amazing opportunity. I'd like to see something, you know, I, I, I don't know exactly where the intersectionality of this stuff is, is broad, but I certainly want to see us do something about parking. And um, you know, every time I hear people complain about our, our unhoused population and complain about parking, I just pull my hair out. Um, and I, I really want to just, you know, address our parking issues. And um, I also want to go back to goal fourteen and and just the, the intro to this talked about our envi- you know, protecting our river and our environment, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and, and setting ourselves up. And I, I just don't see how Rainier fits into that vision. I think that uh as a council, we should just really assess, is this aligned with, with our goal of being carbon neutral? Is it aligned with our goal of, of having um really turning our, our attention back toward our river? Um, and um getting people out of their cars? It just feels like um it is the elephant in the room. Like I just don't see how we can say that we're being serious about climate if, if Rainier is still our, top of our priority when it comes to crosstown connectors. Well, we've got a bridge that needs to be built to connect the entire southeast and southwest part of our town. And we've got a crumbling overpass with a ghost bike on it. That just, like, we could just let that set in and we've got, you know, and we've got five hundred new homes probably going in right there along the um uh, the wa- uh, you know, by the, the new hotel that's being built. And that's going to make traffic worse on Lakeville. And I'm, I, I just feel like we're, to Mr. Hooper's point, it's deceptive. On an environmental front, on a safety front, on all this stuff, because the opportunity cost of Rainier is focusing on the other things that we should be doing. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Um, next is Councilmember Healy, followed by Councilmember King.
Thank you. So um I, I've heard mention of the State of California letter on, on the wetlands, but I've never actually seen it. Um, so I would ask if staff could circulate that. Um, maybe others have seen it, I, I don't recall seeing it. That's one. Um, item forty-nine has come up and um on the status, it says um uh exploring including uh floating solar at Ellis Creek. Um, I, I would like to see the Ellis Creek um solar elevated to a higher priority um as opposed to being just buried in something broader. Um, I, I would like to see an RFQRFP for solar over the um storage ponds at, at Ellis Creek. They might be floating, they might be fixed. I think we should be open in that and see what, what comes back as, as the best alternative. Um, but I'd like, like to see that split off and um brought forward separately. Um, another item that I didn't see that see a specific item number on, but I, I've spoken in the recent past with members of our tree advisory committee about looking for opportunities sized on publicly owned land for an urban forest um in our community for um carbon sequestration, among other things. And, and there's a funding source that would go for that because as uh people who've been following this for a while know, um, Sonoma County Transportation Authority is required to mitigate the trees they've taken down as part of the highway widening through Sonoma County. They have deferred that in order to complete the highway widening sooner rather than later. Um, but now with their quarter cent sales tax extended, um, they should have the funding in place to support the um tree replacements that they're required to fund. Um, and then, then lastly, um, on the issue of EV chargers, I think that's something we all support. And I know just enough about this to be dangerous, but my understanding is there's basically two incompatible types of EV chargers. You've got the Tesla charger and you've got everybody else. And, and I don't know how we prioritize which of those we, we put in uh public places and, and which we require developers to um um, to provide in, in new developments going forward. And then relatedly to that, um, on the point that Ms. Fand was talking about and speaking about historic neighborhoods, I can just say that um my house has a uh one-car garage that was probably built for Model Ts. Uh, it's very small and it has concrete retaining walls around it, so it's not readily expandable. So if, if we were ever to gather an, an electric car, it would probably require something uh in the public right of way to charge, to charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember King, followed by Councilmember Postacay.
Thank you. Um, I have a few items in this area, um, some of which have been touched upon. I'll start with floating solar. Uh, I'm not witted to floating. I, I brought this fourth in twenty sixteen as a floating solar project possibility. Uh, fixed uh and, or floating uh at the Ellis Creek is, is fine with me. But I would like to get this moving um as, as a higher priority. I re- and again, I recognize you're overwhelmed. I'm not going to, we're not going to belabor that, but it has, it has been out there for quite a while. And while this topic is our environmental legacy, it's also our economic legacy. Um, because that'll save the city money once we, we, we get a, a program in place. Um, will reduce our, our electric bill um by, by whatever amount it, it comes out to. Uh, and, and in terms of Ellis Creek, I'd also combine this with, with uh some other comments and, and goals that I've had. I would like to see us continue to look for uh additional government properties that we can put solar panels on to, to further reduce our electric bill and our carbon footprint. I think we have some opportunities out there. Um, and so I'd like to see some, some direction on that fairly soon um as well. Uh, I know, I, and I do appreciate the fact that we're um going to have some uh solar panels online at the four locations, starting later this year, I believe. Um, but I'd like to see that program continue and expand throughout the city. On the subject of electric vehicle charging stations uh in new or substantially upgraded housing and commercial structures, I'd like to see us examine and move uh what we can in that direction as well as in the public right of ways. I think it's going to be important um uh to, to Councilmember Healy's point about um where uh his family would locate their charger. Um, there are tens of thousands of other people uh in the city uh who are in the same boat. Um, you know, they're just, it's not as, as easy for folks to, to have something at their homes to charge up to. And I think taking a look at that going forward is, is important as a, as a goal and a priority. Um, with respect to um a subject that I think cut, is somewhat in this area, but probably covers all the areas. Uh, that's our urban growth boundary. Um, I know that has been uh rolled into our general plan process and, and um from my perspective, that's fine for now. But the goal is to get the general plan back to us by early twenty twenty-three. The urban growth boundary um uh expires in twenty twenty-five. And if there's a delay in the general plan advisory committee process going forward, and uh I'm assuming this is going to have to go in front of the voters since we've done it twice that way. Uh, if not, then, then maybe we can wait a little longer. But if it has to go in front of the voters, I'd like to make sure we, we have it in, in mind as a plan that it goes in no later than twenty twenty-four, perhaps the, the primary elections in twenty twenty-four. Um, I, I, I hope that that won't be an issue uh based on the plan that was set out for the, the general plan process. However, um, there can be delays in that process, and I don't want us to be cut short on something that might require a voter, uh, uh, voter approval. Um, support a number of the things that have been, already been done or in progress. Um, and let's see. I believe that's it in terms of that. I, I, I just wanted to um comment, we, we've had a couple mentions of the crosstown connectors. And I, I think having another workshop on that is fine. I, I'll, I'll hold my um comments regarding it because I don't know that that's going to be fruitful tonight. I have been a, a supporter of Rainier. Um, but I think we need to address um the idea of crosstown connectors. There are, you know, a couple of locations as well as what the true costs are. Um, so um, I didn't address that in the first go around, I'll address it now. And I believe that that's it with respect to um this subset. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Postacay, followed by Councilmember McDonald.
At, at um at the general level, every, everything that is important to me has been covered. I'd just like to mention a few that I would put at the top of the list. I'd certainly agree to have solar at Ellis Creek high up the list. Um, to uh to um look at the, start looking at the fossil fuel purchases by department, you know, and looking for some reductions uh over the, over, over time. That's not item two oh five. Um, also like to uh, to really start looking at um equity in uh our climate actions in terms of uh looking uh at neighborhood and demograph- graphics. That would be item two oh six. And uh, you know, I understand probably not this year, but I think uh by next year be looking to extend all electric uh to some retrofits, uh at least in a demonstration project. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McDonald.
Um, yeah, to paraphrase uh Councilman Postacay there, I think most of the good stuff's been touched on here. I just want to touch a little more on some of it. Uh, I, I'd like to support uh Councilmember King's longstanding advocacy for Ellis to get uh even uh closer up to the top. Um, I'd, I'd like to touch on that whole EV charging thing. Um, as someone who's driven an electric car of leaf since twenty thirteen, I have a little experience and background in this. And um, and who's, whose house also has a Model T garage. Um, the, in the residential area is just to get a two-twenty close enough to the uh curb. You don't have a driveway, yeah, that, that whole parking on the street and who parks in front of the house that has the EV in the public right of way is complicated. But uh the city has done and, and Councilman Healy's point about um, a- about the two styles. Uh, you know, it doesn't matter in a residential, you retrofit really simply, but it's a good point in the commercial, and we need more and more in, in the commercial properties. But this leads me to my compliments to staff's efforts over the years. They've done so much to push forward uh clim- climate initiatives in development uh such as increasing EV. There's, there's a minimum requirement. Uh, staff always pushes developers to get much more than that, and then compliments to the planning commissions of, of, over the years, who push it to even further numbers. Uh, the biggest thing we need to keep uh our eye on in the future is the apartment market. Because the apartment markets uh don't come through with EV charging outlets quite at the same rate. And then there's the need for which, which outlet. That's an easy conversion, but just to get them to put the two-twenty out to the uh front-facing areas is, is a huge achievement. And staff's had all these huge achievements over time. And, and I like that they haven't pushed the reach code out until they were ready and it was legally defensible. I mean, those, that, that's real good policy by staff and to not get ahead and, and do the Windsor path where you roll it out, have a fear of a, a lawsuit and then have to roll it back. I mean, it's much better to get it right and get it good and tight and to uh make errors in this. Uh, I do like from our March eighth meeting that uh the council approved a full-time equivalency in the city manager's office for our climate uh activities. That's a real positive. And then touching on the crosstown connector part, uh again, we need to discuss this, but my concern is money that we have in the bank for this project is quickly losing value. It, it, the inflation cost of construction goes up every year. The interest that city gets on money it holds in the bank is, you know, almost non-existent. We fall further behind the possibility of any good actions unless we perceive with this as a high priority. So I would really like to s- see us get to the, to the bottom of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, you have your hand up again?
Yes, thank you. Two more comments to, to dovetail on the EV charging. I would, I would encourage us to look at the apartments to, Councilmember McDonald's spot on. Um, right now, if you live in downtown in uh the theater district, there's really no charging that I, that I'm aware of that's, that's near there. Um, and I would encourage us to look at level one charging at apartments. Um, a lot of, a lot of charging can happen overnight. And you can get about five times the amount of, of chargers installed. And um and for, you know, a fraction of the cost, it's, it's, uh, so I, I would like to see us look at level one charging for, for apartments, for sure. And then on the reach code front, the, the reach code that I'm really interested in is in something that looks at And then on the reach code front, the reach code that I'm really interested in is in something that looks at the health and safety code around indoor air quality. And I've been doing some research on this in my professional world. But it kind of comes from a personal place for me because I've lived in, I've been a renter all my life. And the last five places I've lived in have gas stoves and non-functioning ventilation systems. And the problem is way more widespread than we realize. And I think that there's an opportunity to use the health and safety code to push for indoor air quality regulations on gas stoves. And basically mandate replacement and probably put in some rent control protections for 12 months following that to make sure people don't have to pay extra for breathing good air. But it's a, it's a real problem. And if you've been reading the stuff about gas stoves, it's really troubling. And it's, it seems like a no brainer to start to look at that from an equity standpoint. Because it's really hitting all the tenants in our town and they have no control over it. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. I will be brief in saying that I really do feel that we need to fund our stormwater program. Now we're borrowing money from the wastewater program. And this is something that we know we need to do and it's just fiscally responsible. And even though we're in a drought, we won't always be. And droughts are often the other side of the drought is the atmospheric river, which causes like flash flooding and things like that. So stormwater funding is really important. I'm absolutely strongly looking forward, that's, by the way, that was 193. And on 196, the pest management, moving forward with getting our ordinance updated on that, which includes outlawing glyphosate and other synthetics, I think is really important. I also want to point out that you know, the city has been wonderful, I think. And I think generations of planning commissions have been very astute in bringing forward the requirements, the conditions of approval that push a greener level of development than is absolutely mandated. And I have always been appreciative of that. But one thing I have recently learned, which I think is almost like one of those little loopholes. It's one of the things you just don't think anybody's going to do until you find out that this is the practice. And that is that in developments that are going on in our city right now, where they are mandated to provide solar. Part of the upgrade of the package does not include being able to upgrade your solar. It's not one of the packages that that is available. So, you know, where you can upgrade a whole lot of other things, you can do, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements to other things, but you know, there's a set number of solar that they're putting in. And I don't think that that was the intent of the city. I think our intent was to make these developments as green as possible. And so again, it's just one of those things that needs perhaps a tweaking in the wording of our conditions of approval, that these are minimums, not maximums. And that if people choose to upgrade that as the buyer of the the item being developed, then that should be available to them. Mr. Healy mentioned something about S C T A and tree replacements. Now that they can have the money to do that. And this is, I think, like something that would really be the role of our liaison to S C T A rather than actually a a goal. But, but I do think it absolutely should be done because I was on the Tree Advisory Committee when this, the whole plan for how 101 was going to be widened. And, you know, trees were like, no, that's just not going to happen. You know, and, you know, they, that's not our priority. And in fact, you have to remember that they just took down all the redwoods everywhere. So, so we need a strong advocate there and luckily we have one. So we will be hoping for that as well. One of the things I want to say before I open this up to the public is that what isn't really pointed out with these goals and what I think we all need to be thinking about as we come to our next meeting in May about this is which of these goals is very time intensive or money intensive? And which ones are, you know, much more likely to get done with very little or or not so substantial amount of either capital or staffing? And if, when council, when the staff comes back to us, there is any way of being able to differentiate between these, I think it would be very helpful for me at least. Because we're going to have a really difficult time as we start voting to what we want to prioritize. Because, you know, it's, some might be very, very easy. But, you know, really, it's not going to get all the bang for the buck that solar panels at Ellis or on government buildings, which I think is a great idea, Councilmember King. You know, those, those things are going to get us a lot of bang for our buck. But, you know, those may be things that are going to take longer. Maybe you'll get one of those projects, but other ones will have to come in as work is going to be done. So I'd appreciate that kind of information as we get to our second meeting. So with that, I will go to our moderator. And Patrick, you're doing double duty on this item. And go to our attendees and have public comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, the our environmental legacy item, please raise your hand in Zoom and we'll be calling on you in turn. I'm going to share my screen for that timer. Okay. Didn't share the way I expected it to, but now it's good. We have five hands currently raised. First speaker is Janice Cater Thompson, followed by Anne Edminster. So Janice, you may unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Hey, just quickly, when we're talking about new development, solar and EV chargers, we need to consider upgrading electrical panels to maybe 200 amps, or it should be something that should be at least evaluated. And then the other thing is when the 101 widening E I R happened, the undercut for Rainier was not part of that. And there's just a lot more fill. So when we're looking at the floodplain management models, we need to look at all that fill and actually add that into the calculations, which was not done. And then a third thing, when we're talking about environmental legacies, I'd like to see more foot bridges across the river for public, you know, for pedestrian access. So more foot bridges would make it better for east and west side connections. And I have a lot of ideas where those could go. Thank you. Great.
Oops, sorry about that, Janice. I cut you off a little bit earlier on that. I think you were just saying, great meeting. That was unintentional. I thought you completed. Next speaker is Anne Edminster, followed by Blake Hooper. And you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. I have to say, I agree with pretty much everything everyone said, all of the council members so far. Wonderful set of priorities and I completely concur. A few things I did want to emphasize. I do put high priority by items number 205 and 206. Also want to add my voice to Councilmember Postacay's regarding developing a program to retrofit low income homes as all electric. Also want to ban gas weed whackers, blowers, mowers and so forth. Also ban single use plastics and comment, a Marin restaurant recently pioneered introduction of a reusable takeout containers, which is a great model and love to see that replicated. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Anne. Next speaker is Blake Hooper, followed by Joe Zep. Blake, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. I'd just like to emphasize the need for a floodplain development moratorium before the general plan process is completed. Like to suggest an EV charging strategy that includes open standard fast chargers in public areas. Supports for a fund to reduce the cost of adding EV charging at existing homes and rental sites. Reduce the cost bearer and to remove the five to one parking requirement. Also ask that the city act now to remove parking minimums and development standards, primarily because it's such a big issue for our kind of long-term emissions plan. And would like to support Councilmember Fisher's call for a pyrostene ban. The Senate was just discussing that today in Environmental Quality Committee. It seems like the ideal time to move forward on that. And just wanted to flag that the City of Santa Rosa won its lawsuit that was brought against it with regards to its all-electric development code, which should give us and other cities plenty of cover to move forward on that aggressively. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is Joe Zep, followed by Josh Simmons. Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good evening. You know, I was thinking, there's a lot of good points in here. These are obviously not the maximums, these are the minimums. And I was wondering, and I'm hoping that the city council are also model citizens living up to these climate policies that they've been discussing. You know, I have some questions. Are you living without vehicles or minimum use of vehicles and using the public transportation? Are you removing the gas appliances in your houses and turning them into electric only? Are you installing solar in all your houses? And what about all of the city buildings? Do you have solar panels on every city building currently? I'm also wondering about the EVs used for the city vehicles. Why aren't we out there using electric vehicles for every city vehicle? Also, I kind of wonder if the
I'm sorry, Joe, ran out of time there. Next speaker is Josh Simmons, followed by M. Ann Sullivan. Josh, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. Really loved the conversation and the sense of priorities and all the work that city staff is doing. I wanted to speak really briefly to the EV charging conversation, which has come a long way and I appreciate that. I want to recognize that. I want to push back a little bit on the notion that we should aim for L1 chargers at apartments. If that's the only option, then sure. But we're making long-term capital investments in infrastructure. I mean, those are really most appropriate for plugging hybrids and e-bikes. So let's, let's aim higher if we possibly can, while leaving options open for for L1 only as needed. The thing that I really wanted to speak to, of course, I've only left myself with 15 seconds, is open data. I think adding more data to the open data portal, specifically with respect to our climate goals. Get people a way to look at that and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next speaker is M. Ann Sullivan, followed by Sheila Baker. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yes, hi. Under the targeted outcomes vision of success that Heather Hines put up, I didn't see anything on biodiversity or preservation of our river ecosystems. In addition to protecting our riparian woodlands, which occur directly along the riverbanks, we've got to preserve our grasslands and wetlands in the upper river for wildlife habitat, wildlife corridors, for carbon sequestration, for groundwater recharge and to preserve the flood storage capacity of the floodplain. Again, in Northern California, we are one of only five Mediterranean regions in the world. We are a biodiversity hotspot. Each time we encroach upon the river, we're destroying our biodiversity legacy, which we're not going to be able to regain. I just want to say thank you to Delinda and Brian Barnacle for bringing forward the concept of disallowing wetlands trading. You always want your wetlands in concert with your river. You don't want to allow developers to mitigate that elsewhere and they never function like the original wetlands do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sheila Baker, followed by Susan Kirks. Sheila, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, thank you. Just another plug and point on bus riding and extending bus routes throughout the city. As I've said, 500 new houses here or units there really is going to make for a lot of traffic congestion. And so bus riding is an environmental issue as well. A 40-foot long bus full of 40 would be car drivers takes 40 cars off the road. And so buses are a wonderful, wonderful way to fight climate change and to help us really deal with this upcoming amount of people that are going to be in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by Ben Peters. Susan, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I have a suggestion for changing environmental legacy to something else, maybe environmental support. I really think that the community doesn't want to get ahead of ourselves by self-congratulation every step of the way. Petaluma has a very, very long way to go to reaching environmental standards, including open space preservation and understanding, as one of the previous speakers said, what biodiversity is and how we need to act to preserve it and support it. So I have 20 seconds just to share with you. I'm the person who's responsible for following through to be sure the City of Petaluma has the Ramsar designation for Wetland of International Importance. 21 years here in Petaluma, the environment and working for Open Space have been my dedicated work. And that's all the time I have.
Thank you for those comments. Next speaker is Ben Peters, followed by Aaron Daly. Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hey, so on the topic of EV chargers, if you guys want to open up the Plug Share app and you look at the only fast charger outside the 101 corridor, that's Two Rock Station. So you can call me, email me anytime. I'm happy to help understand EV charging infrastructure and how you do it. There's actually more like eight connectors, not two. So there's Tesla and a bunch of other ones. But that's why we have the beauty of the free market. Folks like me are out there actively developing electric vehicle infrastructure every day. Just take a note from what Canada is doing. They have city-owned infrastructure, which is the light poles, and they're putting in level two chargers on the light pole. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel on EV charging. We need to look to the experts within our community. So moving on to the topic of solar, I just appreciate the floating solar project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And I did look at my Plug Share app. It was great. I noticed the one in Two Rock. Next speaker is Aaron Daly and then followed by John Hanania. Aaron, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yeah, hi, and thanks, folks. Bunch of quick thoughts here. One is, I didn't see reference to this, super pollutant management. But I wanted to call out supermarkets and how supermarket refrigerant gases are on average about 4,000 times more potent than CO2 and are a very large point source emission of GHG. So I think that would be an easy win to Mayor Barrett's point earlier. Certainly support for funding programs for low-income housing for all electric. Also support a citizen program for planting trees to empower citizens to be able to plant trees. Also support promoting private investment in EV charging and e-bikes, leveraging private capital for those purposes. And otherwise, just thank you for Ellis Creek also. Great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Jerry Wilkinson. John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Well, good evening again. First of all, I'd like to echo the comment from one of the former speakers, Joseph. Are you doing all these things on the city buildings and your houses? And I'd like to ask a question and I'd really like to get an answer for. How much money is the City of Petaluma spending each month on fuel? And I'm talking about car fuel. And how come the public work, most of their equipment is still gas equipped? And all I hear from you guys, you want to go and switch everything. And I would also like to touch on what Mike Healy said, just to hopefully you take a note about this, because I'm going to remind you of it later on. How is it that you have one car garage and some people don't have driveway or garages in the West Side? Just make a note of this, because I'll remind you of it later on. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Jerry Wilkinson. Jerry, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, good evening. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for the work that you do and the dedication that you give to the city and to the citizens. On the topic of crosstown connectors, there's three possibilities mentioned. Two of the three make sense. Certainly, the southern crossing is a no-brainer. We need that. I wish that had been the developer out there had been required to contribute a bit more. That one should go through without any debate, really. And Corona needs to be updated. I think that's that's fairly obvious. And to accommodate people and bikes. And God, Rainier, that's ridiculous. I'm sorry. You're going under a freeway through a floodplain, floodplain over a train crossing, a bed path, and around a hill to an interstate.
Sorry about cutting you off there, Jerry, but your time was up. And that is the last hand we have raised, Madam Mayor, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to respond to Mr. Zeppe and Mr. Hanania. I'm a renter. I can't change the gas appliances out. I am in the process of buying a house right now, and as soon as I do, you can bet where my gas appliances will be going. I ride my bike and walk as much as I possibly can. And if you look at Goal 203 about the city, it says that all gas purchases right now are on hold while we work out our facility and infrastructure plan for going EV. So I would expect that we're going to see a lot more EV purchases coming in the in the coming years and probably a lot less on the fossil fuel side. So.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to move on to Goal Three, A Safe Community That Thrives. And this will be presented by Police Chief Ken Savano and Public Works and Utilities Director Jason Beatty.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and council members, city staff, and the community we serve. Ken Savano, your police chief, it's an honor to present Goal Number Three, A Safe Community That Thrives. As we have seen over the past few years, emergency preparedness is vital to the safety of our community. We also recognize community safety transcends all city departments, not just police and fire. From COVID to PSPS to wildfires, and with a small but mighty city force of dedicated city employees, Petaluma is continuing to lead with our countywide partners to ensure our residents are prepared and that we're able to provide a safe place for everyone in our community, including those who are evacuated or impacted in other ways from these emergencies. Our efforts have included striving for permanent and more affordable housing for our veterans, our seniors, and our unhoused neighbors. There are a total of 37 work plan items within this goal. The next slide, please. As you review our vision of success of these three categories, I want to comment that the health of our community relies significantly upon the physical, environmental, and social infrastructure we provide. Having safe and adequate public facilities for core public safety services, including investing in a state-of-the-art emergency operations center and public safety building assessments for replacement or upgrade is essential. Only limited by our own capacity, we continue to focus on fire, crime, and accident prevention strategies that include the completion of the fireworks ban, restoring some funding for civilian community service officers, pavement improvements, water resource projects, which we've heard tonight mentioned about Ellis Creek, and services for the most vulnerable in our community, including those involving mental health, substance abuse, and the unsheltered. Next slide, please. Emergency preparedness and response has become part of our daily routine and has consumed considerable staff time, as you can imagine. I'd like to acknowledge my fellow city employees, many of whom have had to work on the front lines and out in public in the midst of a historic pandemic. Not able to work remotely with a higher level of safety, these dedicated city employees continue to provide core services during the pandemic. Speaking for staff, I'd really like to thank the council members and the public who have offered their words of support for the hard work of staff and to our city managers' comments, who hears from city staff every day about their need for additional help. I can attest, as a 27-year city employee, staff is fragile and exhausted right now. So thank you very much for those comments. And despite the pulling of those resources into ongoing emergencies that we are experiencing, Petaluma is laying the groundwork to ensure that we are prepared for any disaster and that the lens we look through to provide services is focused on whole-person care, not just single issues or symptoms that impact safety. Next slide, please. Our mission of safety with care and compassion focuses on meeting the needs of our community through proactive planning and preparedness. We recognize to achieve community safety, we have to prioritize our environment and our people, especially those delivering the services that create the level of safety we know our community expects and deserves. You will see here some of the major accomplishments since our last Goals and Priorities workshop. And obviously, many of them have consumed a considerable amount of time and response by city staff. Next slide, please. Thank you for your attention through this important community goal. And like the others, I'll ask the mayor, council members, and community to consider, number one, which of these are still relevant? Number two, which of these need to be added, removed, or delayed? And number three, consider priority as we prepare for the next gathering on this subject. Director of Public Works Jason Beatty will now pull up the work plan items for this process. In summary, we have five items that are not initiated, 12 in progress, 14 ongoing, and six completed. And with that, myself and my great team remain available to answer questions related to this goal.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, just recapping what Chief Savano has said. 37 work items here, and of that, 32 were originally on. We added five new. And he ran through the numbers of what was completed. Show those real quick as we move on to the in-progress and not-initiated. And ongoing, this is, again, what we've integrated into our business as a city. So if you want to look at those and give us feedback, we're looking for that. And then we'll move on to showing you the in-progress and not-initiated, which is kind of, this is what we look for priorities going forward.
So, okay, so I'm, well, okay, I see two hands jump up. I was just going to start it off. But I will call on Councilmember Posake and then Councilmember McDonald.
I'm in trouble getting unmuted there, sorry. And I think Kevin was before me, though. Want to go first, Kevin, or? Okay, I'll go ahead. I don't. I thank the chief and I again thank the city staff for everything that's been accomplished in this regard. The things that stand out to me here are the the need to take care of our homeless population. I know we need the county's help with that, but I we have to get on the same page and proceed here sooner rather than later. Also, beyond that, transitional and fully affordable housing needs to be further developed. I'm ecstatic about the progress on the cahoots program that staff has made. And I also like, as I've mentioned in the past, to return to the Item 92 Tobacco Retail License to limit our youth exposure to vaping. I think that the Tobacco-Free Sonoma County group has been waiting patiently for over a year. They would ask at this point that we try to bring this to a conclusion before school starts in August, if at all possible. And so I like to push for that to get on by then. But and they'll be meeting with some of us and trying to move this forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Posake, if I may. Madam Mayor, before you move on to Councilmember Fisher, I just wanted to note with regard to the tobacco retail license that our staff is working with other city staff to begin that process. So while it is indicated formally not initiated, there is a lot of work going on in the background, so you'll be seeing something coming forward shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't actually going to go to Councilmember Fisher. I'm going to go to Councilmember McDonald first, and then Councilmember Healy, and then Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Maybe I should have gone before Councilman Posake, because he did show great insight into the homelessness issue. We've had chats about this, but you know, there's quite a bit going on at the county, and it's important to recognize it. People do ask, what is the city doing or what are you doing about this? And county has Homeless Coordination Board, the Continuum of Care Board, and it meets basically every week. There's a task for it, in this case, tomorrow and the next day. And one of the high-level things we can say is that over $25 million a year is coming in to Sonoma County to try and address this issue. And some of that is state and federal monies to try and address things. But the city is also putting in significant funds. And I want to recognize that we're doing it, that city is doing that piece. It extends cahoots as a piece of that, but other housing issues. And as Councilman Posake says, the valuable work in homelessness is to get people in a house. Other things are good and important and help the person for the day. But as we heard recently, for every one shelter bed you had, you should be having two rapid rehousing and four permanent supportive housing beds. I mean, it's a pyramid, and you want people into the housing where they stay, not a shelter where they come and go, but where someone is actually housed. And so I want to recognize all the efforts that are going on in that area, but acknowledge that we have a long way to go to to really change what's going on in homelessness. So much of that being mental health services and other what falls into the permanent supportive services and activities. So that's a big goal I think we need to keep chasing. Also, for me, another big one is the the fire buildings evaluation. Getting the study done lets us get to the part of figuring out how to fund the capital improvement. First, we need to commit to a location and and the needs of the firefighting infrastructure there. Kind of in that category is also, we need to have the EOC, and we need to really work on that. So amongst the many things that are important in the safety world, those are just, for me, the top ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Healy, followed by Councilmember Fisher, followed by Councilmember King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm fine with most of these items. I just wanted to highlight two. First of all, I would agree with Councilmember Posake on a local tobacco ordinance. I think that's something we should move forward with. And then the other one was Work Item 74, and Councilmember McDonald has touched on this. But Number 74 is evaluate all city facilities, including our police and fire stations, incorporation yard facilities, and develop maintenance and replacement recommendations. And that's fine as far as it goes, but I think we should pull out the Fire Station Number One replacement and move that to the front of the line, because we know that's the most critical thing that we need to be doing. It's been critical for 20 years. We were told earlier that a 20-year-old skate park is outdated. Fire Station One is approaching its 90th birthday. The antique fire truck that the Fire Department runs in the parade was new about the same time that Fire Station was. And if you go around inside and look around, it's pretty clear that that's about the same age. And this one is enormously frustrating for me, because 12 or 15 years ago, under Chief Albertson, the city had property donated for a new fire station. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on architectural plans. We still have them. There was a study done for where the new Fire Station One needed to be in order to preserve the four-minute response times for the West Side. And I just really think we need to come to closure on this so that Measure U funds can be paired up with whatever grant funding we can get. And we really need a shovel-ready Station One replacement project, because we had one 12 years ago, and now we don't. And that's very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree with that, that not only we need Number One replacement, but I think our police facilities need to be replaced as well. I think in some of these facilities, doing any more retrofitting is just throwing good money after bad. And but I had a question for Chief Savano, because every goal-setting session, I always call Savano. So I just had to say that. But I have a question about 73A and C. And are these on your agenda radar at all, two things that I don't think that we have staffing for, but just wanted to hear it from you?
Yes, and they remain, obviously, in progress or not initiated, and a priority as soon as staffing allows. Absolutely.
So the only issue on those is staffing?
Exactly. Not only do we have a proposal for additional staffing coming forward with Measure U, but also being able to recruit and retain qualified staff that keeps our staffing levels full. We've had a challenge in maintaining those staffing levels over the years.
Right. And so those bicycles that you used to use downtown, are they still adequate? Are we going to have to replace those?
We did replace them with four new ones in the last five or six years, but we have not had staff to ride them. And you may or may not know, but I rode a bicycle for patrol for the first several years of my career. So I'd love to see them restored. It is a priority. But we're trying to handle the other calls for service and the available time issues that we're dealing with. So appreciate you calling attention to it. We look forward to getting back there.
Look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Thank you. I think a lot of the comments that I would have had in this were taken care of in our Measure U discussion a few weeks back, thankfully. And thank you to the community for passing Measure U. The priorities that remain have been ones that have been there for quite a while. And Fire Station Number One is certainly, as Councilmember Healy noted, a long-term goal, and an expensive one, but a long-term one. So I would support looking at all four of the facilities, all, you know, all three of our fire stations and police stations. But I think realistically, in terms of our budgeting and where we are financially, Fire Station Number One is really the one that we need to focus on as our first. Although, as part of that, I'd like to see, you know, what, if anything, can be done with the others. Although I'm probably more inclined to agree that with Councilmember Fisher's comment that, you know, it's unclear what improvements can be made from an economic point of view that makes sense. But I'd like to take a look at that if we had it. That would be my priority out of all of the ones that remain undone. And we semi-addressed this in our discussion with Measure U a few weeks back. But I'd like to see that we have something ready to go sooner- But I'd like to see that we have something ready to go sooner rather than later so that when it comes time to try to bond the money to build it, we have not only a plan in place, but it's something that is workable and immediate so that it happens quickly, as opposed to the opposite, which is we have the money, but we don't know what to do with it at the moment. And that gives us a couple of years to work with this, I think, at this point. Couple other comments. I appreciate all the comments regarding homelessness and from the prior speakers and support whatever measures we can to work with that. And also supporting the tobacco licensing ordinance coming forward. I appreciate the chief's comments on that and look forward to seeing that. So I think on that subject, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know exactly where this lives, but there are some housing ones in this section. So I'm just going to throw my housing goal out, which is meet our RENA target for this cycle. I'd love to have that be a goal and a priority for us. And I think it put us in, probably put us in pretty elite status with all the other cities in California, from what I understand. It'd be nice to be there. On Goal Ninety-three, it feels like we need more there in terms of how we the data around that, right? How we measure and apply that, and really having some rigor in how that's applied. The Parks Master Plan is a great way to address that, I think. So I guess that echoes Parks Master Plan. The ninety-eight, ninety-eight, so yeah, I think that, again, goes to the Parks Master Plan. So I'm just going to, we might be able to consolidate some goals in here around some of these things if we just say create a Parks Master Plan that is informed by data and, you know, looks at things. I would love to see the bicycle team back. E-bicycles are great. I would encourage people to check those out. I echo what Councilmember Fisher said, which is I'm worried that we're throwing good money after bad. I feel that way about the solar panels on the police station right now. Is that if the police station is going to be moved and we're going to upgrade it and have a, you know, world-class police station or public safety station, and we're putting solar panels there, is the police station going to be there in ten years? Are we going to be able to do full construction if we've got solar, you know, a canopy? So I do share that concern. I would like to have a better sense of where things are going to live. I think all the council members are in support of that. So that would be one of the priorities that I have for sure. Other than that, it's good to see the progress on this front.
Thank you. I think there's been really good conversation by the council members on the homeless issue and on the tobacco issue and on the buildings, you know, that house our safety facilities and people. So, you know, I don't want to go over that again. I really would like to address seventy-three A about bike cops. I think the point that the Vice Mayor just made about perhaps we're looking at e-bikes for these police in terms of making them get around more, but I don't think it should be restricted only to downtown. I would, I think that seeing police all around our town on bikes and e-bikes makes a very good transitional use there would be something worth looking at once we are able to. And maybe that, some of the people who are on those e-bikes would be people who are more related in the cahoots part of the policing and safety in our town as that moves forward. I really look forward to seeing what comes out of our Ad-Hoc Committee for Community and Policing and hope that some of these specifics about policing get addressed there. So and I also want to say, the chief asked about if we thought anything shouldn't be done. And I really would like to take a position against the SROs, the resource officers in the schools. I think, but again, I would wait to hear what the Ad-Hoc Committee has to say about how policing and the community interact. Because I think there are better ways for the police and the community, especially youth in our community, to interact that is much more meaningful and has longer-lasting results. But and I know, I don't know where this one goes in, but just in this past week, I have had surprises by bicyclists on sidewalks as I have been in my car. And I will admit, I haven't been in my car very much for the last year, and there haven't been all that many people around. So maybe bicyclists are feeling much more comfortable about riding on the sidewalks. But, you know, that has to stop because that is just an accident waiting to happen because you're not really expecting them to be on the sidewalk. They're supposed to be in the street. So I hope that the police can help with that kind of education. So I see a hand up with our Councilmember Fisher before we go to public comment. Yes?
Well, I just can't resist in talking about having the police on bicycles in the downtown and being able to expand that. We have got to expand our infrastructure if we're going to have the police go beyond the downtown. As somebody who rides her bike in this city, it is very dangerous. So I think we need one before the other. It'd be great to expand it. But and in terms of the kids being on their bikes in the downtown on the sidewalks, I think that's actually illegal, so.
Yeah, oh, no, I know it's illegal, but it actually wasn't in the downtown. One was on Lakeville and one, I forget where the other one was. But, you know, yeah, it's an issue. So, well, okay, I see our Vice Mayor has his hand up now, yes?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on that. I would worry about our workers' comp claims skyrocketing if we've had police all over on these streets right now. But that's the paradigm change that we have. That's our opportunity. I don't think we'd ask our police officers to put themselves in harm's way that way. But we are, you know, knowingly letting our residents do that. And that's why I really am all in on funding everything feedback right now.
Okay, thank you. And I actually wasn't looking to put our police in harm's way. I was not trying.
I love the vision. It's out there.
Okay, so now we will have Patrick go to public comment with attendees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to provide public comment on this subject, please raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll call on you in turn. Okay, getting some hands raised, so I'm going to share my screen. And our first participant is Ann Edminster, followed by Blake Cooper. And you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. I want to speak to the issue of homelessness and in relation to our carbon budget. Not that we necessarily have one that's explicit, but I think we have one that's implicit. I would like to see us develop a mechanism to allocate carbon for construction along with a scoring system that would both prioritize and incentivize creation of the permanent beds that Councilmember McDonald mentioned. I think that's incredibly important for all levels of community thriving and wholeness. I'd also like to see more focus on community gardens so that we have better, fresh, local food for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next speaker is Blake Cooper, followed by Karen Strollia. Blake, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. I just wanted to thank Councilmember McDonald for prioritizing the need for housing-first approaches to tackle our homelessness issues and for calling out the greater need for county support on this front. Also wanted to emphasize the need for an emergency operations center in the city and hope that will be adequately connected to county operations ahead of potential incidents. And would like to emphasize Item Eighty-two and the need for multilingual outreach. We've not had a wildfire here yet, but that doesn't mean we aren't at risk, and we don't want to leave more than twenty percent of our community behind. Grateful that staff is still in progress on the Care and Shelter Operations Manual. During the 2018 fires, when we served as evacuation location at the fairgrounds, it took quite some time to get that site organized. Grateful for work being done on Goal Seventy-seven and knowing that's been a major stumbling block in Sonoma County during disasters. And have three seconds left, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is Karen Strollia, followed by Joseph. Karen, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, thank you so much. This is Karen Strollia with Downtown Streets Team. Thank you for all of the work you all have done with this. The reason I wanted to pop on is just to acknowledge that it's been incredible to be a part of the Petaluma community for the past nine months, working with COTS and our other community partners and the work that we're doing in ending homelessness and serving those community members of ours who are unsheltered and having a hard time. I'm really looking forward to the impact we'll be having this next year. We've got new strategies as we've come to the table collaboratively and in a collective way to make change with collecting data and using that to fit the needs of our local community with asks from the county at the county level. So I'm just really proud to be here. Thank you so much for having us. I'm excited to start working with cahoots and seeing what we do in this next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next speaker is Joseph, followed by Janice Cater Thompson. Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello. Thank you, Brian, for responding to my last comment that is one out of six council members. Also, what are the numbers of houses needed to be added for this RENA goal during this cycle? I'd really like to know that. It sounds like you know that answer. I'd like to hear it. Also, I'd like to send my appreciation out to fellow attendee John, whom also sees the necessity for accountability within our city management. So moving on from that, I would like to also say that the fairgrounds is a really great opportunity for emergency shelters, and that goes for humans, pets, and livestock. That has helped many, many times over the fires in the past few years. And we need to realize how important that fairgrounds is for the emergency response of this city and for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker is Janice Cater Thompson, followed by John Hanania. Janice, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Great, thanks. I just, first of all, want to thank staff, Mayor Barrett, and the entire city council. This is really a great conversation and all the people that are commenting. And I just want to reiterate again, the Rainier undercut is like now, it's a crosstown connector for bikes and pedestrians. And this is why it's so important to start looking at foot bridges across the river because we have an access for east and west crossing. And for, you know, if police are on bikes, you know, it's a great access. And there, you know, there's a concern. You have an undercrossing. And I really appreciate that you're talking about the homeless and what's going to happen, but these areas all have to be patrolled. And now since we have the undercrossing, we really need to look at the next connection so we can get to the west side. Thanks.
Thanks, Janice. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Christine Rebilio. John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello. First of all, thank you, Joe, for your comment. I do believe the only two people in the police department left from the original bike team is Ken Savano and Tim Lyons. I really highly encourage you to go to San Rafael and talk to the folks down there. How did they manage to build the safety center? They had a makeshift fire department where they tore the old one and built a new one. So why can't it be done here? I don't understand it. When it comes to safety, I don't know if anybody in town have the experience that I've had with communication with the public. If you go out there right now and talk to the public, the public have so much fear of dealing with the police. The police need to be the public friends, not public enemy number one. And I remind you what took place at IHOP on last Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Christine Rebilio, followed by Josh Simmons. Christine, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you, everybody. Great evening. I'm Chris Rebalo. I'm the chair of your senior advisory committee. I'm speaking on my own behalf this evening. I want to thank you for including visitability in the goals. Visitability makes houses accessible. I would encourage you to go beyond just single-family houses. Yeah, there's a lot of construction happening in town, and I think it's important for a good percentage of all housing to be made accessible for everybody. I think that's a great direction for the city to go. And also, with all the new construction that's happening in town, I really encourage a building code that makes it easy for people to install grab bars and other safety measures, you know, so that that's an easy thing to add as people need, as they age. Thanks again.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker is Josh Simmons, followed by Susan Kirks. Josh, you may unmute yourself and begin.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to echo the previous speaker, Christine, on the matter of visitability and accessibility. I know when I've put together guides for people who are coming to town, particularly when I'm running events like North Bay Python, I've had to do a lot of documentation specifically around where they will not find, visitors will not find accessible environment, and give them guidance for how they can get around that, like, okay, well, you can't use this bathroom, but you could use that bathroom. So just in general, that's something that happens in old towns, right? We have a lot of old architecture. Can't get around that in some ways. So anything we can do to prioritize that in other buildings is fantastic. The other thing, just really briefly, I appreciate the process that's going on with the ad hoc. I hope we can bring sort of the lens of race relations ad hocks to other subject matter areas like parks and recreation, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next speaker is Susan Kirks. Susan, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment that crosses over to your earlier areas this evening where there was a comment about the interrelationship of all the areas. There is, when you think about people who live here and the very low percentage of diversity in our community and the high percentage of white people who live here and how we plan so that we have a safe community where people really can feel safe in their neighborhoods. One of the things I think I'd like to ask you to look at, if you think about someone who's lived here, who is not white, are names like Lynch Creek Trail, Lynch Creek, Lynch Creek Way. The term Lynch has a really significantly negative connotation for many members of our country and our neighbors and our community. And I'd like to ask that that be looked at and researched and potentially.
Thank you, Susan. Sorry to cut you off there. Madam Mayor, that's the last hand we have raised, so we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close public comment on that item, and we will go back to Councilmember McDonald. Has his hand up?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I mean, there are a couple of comments I wanted to add at this time. One is like, with great apology to the DST team, they're an essential part of the city's homeless strategy and hadn't gotten mentioned. I appreciate Karen coming on the call right there. Secondarily, to the public commenter who mentioned San Rafael's project, they, for fire safety, they refit all ten of their stations, including purchases of new lands to do things. They pass a very significant dedicated fire tax. So I mean, it's a world-magnitude difference. And typically, council doesn't get in a direct feedback comment with personal questions, shall we call it? But in answer to Joe's reply, his points. shall we call it, but in answer to Joe's reply, I, uh, his points, um, you know, um, yes, I have solar, yes, I drive an EV, yes, I take Smart Train to work and ride the bike back, and yes, I'm over a thousand miles on the bike, uh, this year so far, but the real, and, and, and our other council people, while they didn't reply, either work in town or retired, what you're looking at is a very privileged sector of our community. The real question is what are we doing to facilitate broader adoption of the kind of things he's worried about? It's not that the council isn't leading both personally and by policy, but how do we roll it out so we really get the impact of what we're trying to do? So, try to stay away from the personal side and try to see the, the big picture of the, the good that's so necessary for this. Um, and then touching also the Rena numbers, I would, uh, uh, direct his attention to our March 1st meeting where the Rena numbers are in, uh, item 4A. They're there for him to, uh, check out at, uh, at this time. And, uh, lastly, the point we didn't touch on is we all voted, well, the measure O passed as a mental health initiative and that went to the county. Petaluma needs its fair share of that to address our mental health programs down here. So, when that comes up in conversation in the public arena, please make sure we're saying that funding is not just a county funding, but it is for all of the cities without, within the county who need this to help address their homelessness, safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the vice mayor has his hand up and then after he speaks, I would like us to take a five-minute break, uh, and then come back for an economy that prospers.
Yeah, to Joe's point, definitely read the, read item 4A. We need 163 units at the very low and we need 55 units at the low to hit our Rena goals for this cycle, and then there's only draft ones for the next cycle.
Okay, thank you. So, that concludes, um, goal three, the safe community that thrives. And thank you, uh, Police Chief Savano, uh, and, um, Public Works Director Beatty for your work on this item. And, um, it is 9:13 by my clock, so we will take a five-minute break and be back here at 9:18. Okay, I see that it is 9:18, um, and I'm not certain if everybody is back yet. Patrick, we're looking at you.
Is it still, still spotlighted?
Yeah. Um, okay, yeah, now I have it on, uh, everybody. I think everybody is here. One, two, three, six. Oh, okay, seven, yes. Okay, we're all here, so thank you very much for being so prompt. And we will go on to goal number, uh, four, an economy that prospers. And this will be led by, uh, Economic Development and Open Government Director, um, Ingrid Alverdi and Communications and Economic Development Specialist, Nancy Sands.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and City Council and community members. Um, I want to, um, go over the, the city's goal of an economy that prospers. Um, I think, um, it goes without saying that when we have a thriving business environment and we have a strong, diverse, and resilient economy, um, we have a, a prosperous community and that's really what's at the, at, at the heart of this goal. Um, next slide, please. Some of the, some of the measures that were put in place, um, when we originally envisioned this goal, um, and some of the targeted outcomes were around, um, attracting and retaining businesses, promoting Petaluma as a destination, and specifically focusing on river enhancements that would both make Petaluma more desirable and, uh, make it a, a destination for tourism. Uh, some of those, uh, some of those work plan items focused on, uh, making it easier to do business with streamlined permitting, um, and also with staff support, um, with education and guidance around, uh, business startup activities. And then also, um, focusing on, um, helping workers be prosperous as well with a, with a dedicated minimum wage. Uh, we wanted to focus on shopping locally. Um, there was some, there was some focus on parking and transportation downtown. And again, um, quite a bit of focus on our river, which we mentioned, um, in some other goals around, um, dredging the river and making it more accessible. Next slide. I think, uh, we all agree that we're in a very different place than we were last year in February when we were talking about what, uh, an economy that prospers was going to look like. Um, so we did, um, you know, really pivot this year. Uh, we had to do very different bus, business outreach this year. We had to think about, um, providing, um, support to businesses through loans, through, um, no cost permit programs like free range, allowing businesses to expand outdoors easily and quickly. Uh, we also, um, expanded our work partnering with our county colleagues and partners so that we could implement recovery efforts, um, you know, in a coordinated way. We launched, uh, marketing campaigns to help our local retailers and partnered with our downtown association while also, um, continuing to maintain and span leases and, and real estate. Next slide. Um, so while it was a very challenging year, I think it was also a very successful year for us. We issued almost $200,000 in business stabilization loans. Um, we launched a new website, which is something that had always been envisioned but got expedited, um, during the, this, the shutdown. We, um, have a shop Petaluma program with gift cards. Um, we did also complete the minimum wage ordinance and we also launched a fair wage campaign to help our restaurants sort of transition through the additional costs while, um, focusing on the positive results of minimum wage. Um, and again, we really have been focusing on, on business expansion and retention and, and we've seen at the beginning of this year, a lot of new business inquiries. So, we're, we're looking forward to, to recovery for next year and, and what that will bring to our community. Next slide. So, I know, um, Patrick's going to bring up our work plan list and I can tell you some stats. We originally had 20 items on this list. We've added five more and of those items, um, four have been completed, eight are in progress, 12 are, I would say, really ongoing because a lot of what economic development is, is less about what we do, but how we do it and making sure that, that we work together in teams with the city to support business, be efficient and effective. Um, and then we have, um, really only one item on this list that was not initiated. That item was to, um, complete an updated economic development strategy, um, for a variety of reasons that wasn't initiated. And at this point, we're really looking to our general plan and the economic development element that will be part of that as a way to begin the visioning for, um, our economic development strategy moving forward. And that completes my presentation and I'm here for questions if needed.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, has anybody jumped up to put their hand up? Yes, Council Member McDonald has.
Oh, okay, first again. Well, um, yeah, I, I very, I am very much glad for the city's progress on this this year. I mean, um, especially a lot of gratitude for getting the minimum wage out and done, and done well. It's difficult on, on businesses because it's changed. Uh, we still see on receipts where the city surcharge is listed on certain restaurants' receipts, but, uh, doing the right thing, sometimes, um, it's necessary to take a, uh, to have some challenge when you do the right thing. Uh, I want to appreciate staff, uh, for their award-winning permitting. Uh, that was nice that they were recognized by the industry for that, uh, permitting program that they got awards for. Um, but, um, I note on here the hotel, uh, issue and as that one went through, um, that would be number 113, as that went through planning to, uh, new hotels were approved, we realized that we have half the hotels of, uh, Rona Park and that their rate of increase of hotels is double our rate, uh, our rate of applications for new hotels. And the ones that, uh, came through planning a couple of years ago, we haven't seen kick off yet. So, that's definitely an economic issue for, uh, our town. And, uh, and it's just, you know, the, the economy lets them build when they build, but, but we would be in a better economic space with more TOT and other revenue coming in from that direction. And then although, although I know we were going to touch on this in, uh, places, our local downtown business environment would be stronger if we had, uh, the Tressel project, the promenade, uh, built out and more active use of that downtown area. Though I love what restaurants have done during COVID to, to pivot outside along the river. Uh, and then lastly, I do want to kind of, uh, comment there that though we've had great success with dredging, uh, credit, uh, to the, the mayor's efforts there, um, we have a future problem and the time to fund the next dredging is not when it silts up and can't be a turning basin anymore. The time to figure out a plan is before that funding crisis hits. So, I'm looking forward to having a plan pulled together early-ish, now-ish as a higher priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Healy.
Thank you. This has certainly been an area where staff has done remarkable things. Uh, the city's done remarkable things over the last year. Um, and so my comments are short on this. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that Council Member McDonald mentioned and then what other. I do agree that we need to be thinking long-term about the funding source for the next dredging because we told the Corps we'd be responsible for it going forward. And if we need to put a sinking fund in place and put money into a, some sort of a, a lockbox to have it available, that, then we should be having that conversation now rather than 10 years from now. On the hotel point, um, I, I, and I'll report back on this, um, after our next meeting, after the WAC meeting, uh, a week from today, a week from this morning. Um, but, uh, on hotels, um, it's, it's really interesting that i- in the water world, um, we're, we're talking about implementing the, um, cutback formula that's embedded in our restructured agreement for water supply. And, um, the town of Sonoma gets actually totally hammered by that cutback formula because they don't get any water for their hotel rooms. Nobody does. It's really just for human habitation. Um, so, I'll have more to report on that next week, as I said, but, um, Sonoma is probably going to be dodging a bullet at least this one year on that issue, but it's, it's, it's a challenge. The, the other thing I just wanted to say, and I didn't see a specific item on this, maybe it's there and I just missed it, but, um, I think over the next year, we should be putting a lot of energy into trying to retenant storefronts downtown. Uh, the number of vacant storefronts is, is scary. Um, a lot of it is COVID-related, some of it isn't. Um, but I think we should be working with landlords and, and the downtown association and anyone else who could be of use on that to try to get, um, our downtown back to what it was and what it should be going forward. And that's all I had on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member King, solid bike. Council Member Fisher.
Thank you. Thank you for the very good presentation as well. I only have a few of items or a few questions. One is, um, and this is really less of a goal than a comment, um, about how things are going to look in the future, but I, I'm curious as to what the, what the impact of, or the long-term impact of the work at home movement from COVID, uh, and its overall impact on, uh, the commercial rental market in the city. Um, I don't know that we need to report, but it's certainly something to keep an eye on for both planning as well as, uh, economic development. I think it's a little early to make too many judgments, but I, I, I do think it's going to continue even beyond COVID on some level and it may have some impacts there. Uh, I, I, um, appreciate the continuance of the business retention and attraction program. And at some point, I, I would appreciate some type of report on that, uh, that can be forwarded to the council and whether it's, uh, a, a public meeting or workshop, I, I think that, that remains very important. Um, and then the last item, uh, well, uh, the item before last is, uh, um, I think we're going to need to examine the relative, the question of, uh, permanence of some of these, um, restaurants in public, public spaces, um, that have come up during COVID. Uh, there's a number of places, mostly in the downtown, excuse me, area. Rent, many of them are on private property and that is not the city's, uh, uh, direct responsibility, but some are on the city's and, um... And um, I think we we as a council need to be kept abreast and the community needs to be kept abreast of the status of that as hopefully COVID begins to wind down. My last comment is I absolutely concur with the comments about a dredging sink dredging fund to be established. I don't know how quite how how we do that, how we put money away, because one of the things we do uh not do particularly well is is set aside money for for programs like that, but I I think we're going to be looking at it in seven, eight years or so, and the time to get started is now. So those are my comments, and uh, again, thank you for the report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fisher, followed by Councilmember Postecake.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Um, I had a question for Ingrid. And this is in regard to business retention in our downtown and the empty storefronts and so on, because I actually took a tour of the downtown today with somebody who's looking to move move here, um, has an existing facility but wants a downtown facility. And um it it's been surprisingly busy downtown, and um I heard about another person who's actually taking over another storefront. And what is your sense of what's going on um in terms of our our downtown and the real estate and what's going to stay vacant? Because it seems like there's a lot of activity.
I I think it's a really good question, and when I heard it, I thought to myself, um, it's probably a good time to run some data. Um, the downtown real estate is is one of the harder areas for us to track just because of the way those properties are listed. Many times you might see a vacant space that's still for lease are that are trading hands. Um, so I think we'll have to go back and and do some some door to door research to get a handle on that. And I think that's a a good project for us to take on and as we start to look at recovery and get a sense of what truly is going to be needed for recovery versus I think we're going to see a lot of people going out and going to restaurants and 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 shopping because of a lot of pent up demand. So um, it 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 could be, like you said, very, very busy, and and we've heard more inquiries. It was an interesting shift, even at the beginning of the year in February, we'd spent nine months talking to business owners as therapists, as support, trying to find any possible ways to help people get through some really, really tough months. And then we just quickly shifted to people that are looking to open new spaces. So I think that we'll be pleasantly surprised, but I I that's anecdotal, and I think it's a good time for us to do some more research. And and I'd love to get back to the council on that.
Thank you. I can add to the anecdotal because I'm downtown at least two or three days a week um outside all day long. And I can tell you that Fridays are incredibly busy, Saturdays are packed. And and a lot of it is tourists, but a lot of people also just now saying, oh, my goodness, I haven't been downtown in a year, and look at what's here. And um, I wanted to touch on the free range um project, and uh I think maybe we can incorporate that into our discussion about about parking and notice that's coming up on an agenda at later in the summer coming before us, that we don't do anything until we've had that sort of parking restaurant outdoor use discussion, so we can weigh all of those issues.
I think we added an item on there, look at a more permanent parklet program where we, I think we would weigh all of those issues. Right now, just we've worked with um businesses and have extended the offer through October with the idea that that, first of all, when we put together the program, we didn't know when we were going to be able to open up from COVID. And second, we wanted to give the 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 businesses a chance to recover from a lot of um months with no income. So hopefully with some extra space, people can recover and um kind of catch up from from a lot of the losses last year, and that'll be a perfect time for us to come and take a look at that permanent use of the public right away. How do we want to use it? How much do we want to use it? Uh, what are our priorities, et cetera?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, Councilmember Postecake.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think it's really uh important to study the uh, the where we're going with the free range program. I think it's been really successful, and uh I think it's also important, again, I'm just repeating stuff, but I I think it's also important for um the staff to or or all of us really to uh um talk to both landlords and businesses uh downtown. And I'm really happy to hear uh developers looking at the Golden Eagle Shopping Center. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will echo, um, I think it was Councilmember McDonald and Healy, the the work that this group put in, everybody's done it, but this work, um, when I first came on and I heard, you know, 100 community update emails through a fire and a pandemic and 8,000 people with 30% open rate, those are ridiculously awesome numbers. So congratulations to your your small but mighty team. My my comment on the hotels is sort of what Councilmember Healy was saying. I'm less interested in the revenue that's going to come from from adding new hotels. Because I think we've got a shortage of of land in our city as it is, and I don't think there's a lot of support for um expanding our urban growth boundary. And I think that well, to be frank, we've gone through a land use paradigm where we're all fighting over taxes, and that's just not sustainable long term. We can't be fighting over sales taxes, T O T taxes. I mean, it eventually we've we've got to break the paradigm. So I I I'm not really supportive of adding new hotels unless you know, we can show that there's a demand, which I I haven't seen. In terms of the economic development item number 108, I like the idea of folding that into the general plan process. Um, with the exception that I think we need to keep thinking about how to activate spaces. These businesses have really benefited from public spaces, and we can create more and more public spaces. Just the creativity of this group, you know, the whole free range program of how it grew and you know, the the tents, everything. We've we've done a lot for our local business community, and I'd like to see us keep doing that. I'd like to see music in the park once a once a month at Walnut Park, sort of like Yalesburg does. I love the music outside of uh Speakeasy. I'm a music fan, so I'm going to just support music generally. But I I I'm really, really excited um to see where we can go, because if there's the silver lining of COVID is that it taught us that, you know, it it's good to be outside. And we don't need that much parking, despite what some think. On shop pedaluma, I love that, and I I think that we need to have more of a business plan uh built around shop pedaluma to make it sustainable, or else it's going to be a one time thing. And it's, you know, it's one of those things that can be maybe folded into the, you know, climate ready or something, but there's some some element of localizing that we we can do to sort of, you know, fold things together and do more promotion for local businesses. And then on the the somewhere in here, we talked about the two parklets, but I thought the art grant covered three, and there was going to be a third one at Ray's. Can you give me the update on the Ray's parklet?
I'm gonna let Nancy jump in. She's got all the all the um details on the parklet.
We are, um, the Ray's parklet is under review. Um, so the art grant uh originally was, um, we were looking at three businesses and we're um the downtown association and the Art Center, who are the um sponsors of the grant or the recipients of the grant, rather, are um are looking at actually doing four total. So we have the plans for Ray's, and we're reviewing them and working. Actually, we have a meeting tomorrow morning because we'd like to see that one come to fruition as soon as possible. And uh, we expect that there will be plans coming for the fourth um very soon.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Postecake, do you have your hand up again, or?
No, I'm sorry, didn't take it down.
Okay, all right, just just checking. Um, okay, so um, again, just like uh, I think the entire council was pretty unanimous in uh thanking your small but mighty group, as the vice mayor said, uh, in really uh supporting our businesses at this unprecedented time. And um, I do believe, uh, well, I agree with what you said about that we we may need to be supporting them a while longer because so many of them incurred costs uh that were unprecedented. Um, but uh, so thank you for that, and um, thank you. We're going to keep that going. But in terms of our goals, um, I think one of the things I've been very happy about is the timing of having gotten the dredging done at a time when people uh who have restaurants that had a who whose back faced the river had the potential for turning that around, something that many people in Pedaluma have wanted for decades to uh better utilize the river facing side of our downtown. And um, hopefully, we um uh, and I know we're getting to uh places that inspire and spaces, we can talk about the trestle. But you know, that whole area now that is facing the river uh with the river being dredged, uh, you know, we have more reason for people to want to look at it. Um, and uh, now with the float house and other things that are happening around the river, we'll have more activity on the river and and people, you know, uh, will be able to see that. So the so the synergy is there, and I really think we need to promote that the best we that we can. I think that the parking situation downtown, um, I think people are are concerned about it, and I think that we just do need, I think it was Councilmember King, who said, you know, we just really need to have the discussion in a way that involves everybody so that people don't feel that they're giving up parking of uh customers for their bu- business uh to the restaurants. Um, you know, I think I think we really need to make sure that it works for everybody and everybody understands the upside of this and 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 we actually tell people, where are people going to park? You know, and I think we need to have the same kind of creativity we've had before during COVID now, because um, you know, the idea of shuttles and parking uh areas outside the downtown uh i- is a possibility. You know, the funding of that is always the the devil. Um, but you know, there may be grants for that. There may be ways that if we could have an ongoing shuttle uh going down perhaps to the where the Fairgrounds is uh or out to some of the park and rides uh that aren't in use in the weekends as much. You know, we we might be able to figure this out. Um, so I I would like to see that continue. I also think it's time that we will look at our zoning in terms of cannabis. Um, I do think that downtown is a good place for retail cannabis, and I would like to see us um you know, explore that. Um, I think that it has a real upside for the fact that the um, the the sales per square foot of of that product are rather much higher than uh some of the other retail stores that have been there. So that uh, that would be good for our city, and it would also be good for um bringing in uh people who want to want to buy those products and then exten- extend their stake to other um shops or uh businesses. And I think if we want to look at putting a surtax on cannabis sales in Pedaluma, we could think of uh of an area that we want to, you know, dedicate that tax. You know, whether that would be um, you know, something for downtown or something for the homeless issue or something for healthcare, something for students, you know, I think we that's a discussion we need to have. But I definitely think we need to move this forward. So uh, I'd like to see that be a a strong priority as well. So with that, I'm going to ask our moderator to please open a public comment uh with people who are in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to take over the screen share and share my screen and invite the members of the public to raise their hand uh to talk on this topic. We have several hands raised, starting with Susan Kirks, followed by Hannah. So Susan, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Um, I'm one of the people who thinks that the trestle project probably shouldn't go forward. Um, I think there's enough going on with the river, water street and natural areas downtown that investing more money and time in that other than to remove it is probably not very productive. I also would like to see emphasis on East Pedaluma. Um, you know, how are we helping East Pedaluma, Northeast Pedaluma, economic development there? And also, um, I'd like to see uh an expansion into real progressive business discussions. Um, Yokos Creamery is here in Pedaluma, and that's a real um wonderful business that's based on humane humane treatment of animals and really good nutrition and health. So um, uh, there's a farm sanctuary that's located just outside of town. I'd like to see us balance what we have here that you all call traditional with humane and uh progressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker is, I think Hannah, uh, the hand raised and went down, but Hannah, you may unmute yourself and uh begin your comments.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I got disconnected and had to sign back. And um, so awesome that the river got dredged and having the trestle fixed would complement the dredging. I do not believe we need to add more hotels in town, but we could better fill the hotels if Parks and Rec was able to maintain our fields in a way we can host tournaments and teams would want to come play here, stay in our hotels, shop downtown and eat at our restaurants. And I fully support cannabis dispensaries downtown and using those taxes to improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Ben Peters. John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Uh, I never got an answer about how much money did the city spend for gas. And to respond to Kevin, uh, the the person who spoke about Sarafel has got a name. It's John. Uh, and you talk about making excuses that they bought a land. Well, Paluma owns a lot of land. Look how much they own around the city hall. There is an empty parking lot on the other side of Fire Station Number One. Why aren't you trying to buy it? You guys are good at making excuses. You're you're notorious of making excuses. That's one. Uh, the hotels, I don't think we need any more hotels, since you guys complain nonstop, there's not enough water. The hotel room, doesn't it have a bathroom? They don't take showers. They don't use a toilet. Where's all this water coming from? So you either quit crying about water or quit crying about more hotels, but you can't have it both ways. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Ben Peters, followed by Blake Cooper. Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments. Are you there, Ben?
Let's come back to him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll come back to you, Ben. Um, next speaker is Blake Cooper, followed by Jared Volmer. Blake, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Uh, thank you very much, Patrick. I just want to say I was grateful to the city for completing the minimum wage ordinance, especially given the crisis that we've all been living through for the past year. I was really glad to see that the current goals prioritize infill development, especially with regards to vehicles maltraveled. And I'd also like to support Vice Mayor Barnacle's comments on item 108 and ask that we start to prioritize more sustainable job creators in town, especially if we want to reduce commuting to and from the city, which is why I think item 111 could be really exciting. And on item 119, I would just ask that we do the work to ensure that the river enhancement plan is codified, because we've now been able to approve several projects that violate that plan. And finally, I would just ask that while our downtown area is beautiful, that we take some time to invest in the economic development of the east side, especially for sustainable jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Uh, Jared Volmer is next up, and then we'll go back to Ben Peters. Jared, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. So many great topics tonight. Um, so I am a former Little League Board member and former P BAC member. I currently manage a youth baseball team called the Pedaluma Leghorns. We practice and play at McNear Baseball Field. This spring, we've hosted 11 games in McNear Park. This spring, we've hosted 11 games in McNear Park from visiting teams all over the Bay Area. That was after the COVID curtain was lifted. Visiting teams always gush over the gem of the field that we have and they ask to come back and they're always asking about the grandstands and when will those be restored? We don't often have tournaments in town because there's just not the bandwidth to host them. And at McNear, we could probably do four to six teams per weekend. That's 40 to 90 families coming in and spending money. So there's this renewed community interest and there's all these visitors that want to come. So we're really hoping that we can revitalize McNear Baseball Field and Softball Field to host some, some games and enjoy our beautiful park in the middle of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. We'll try Ben Peters. Ben, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I just want to quickly remind some of the parking conversation that the city has previously had. So there was a great workshop, the International Parking Expert identified that without paid parking downtown, all of the great parking spaces will go to the employees. And a very easy fix is to have modest metering so that employees are incentivized to go park at the very upper floors of our parking stations, which are underused. So there are very readily available solutions. They could be implemented very quickly. It would have a huge impact on our downtown parking situation. And then there's a little bit more modest means such as implement a RSVP program similar to Mill Valley, or include new parking permits for all development so that the parking conversation can be removed as an obstacle to our housing crisis. So looking forward to the.
Thank you for your comments, Ben. Sorry to cut you off there. Next speaker is Josh Simmons followed by Janice Kater Thompson. Josh, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. I want to thank and give a lot of credit to Ingrid, Nancy and the team for the work they've done over the pandemic to accommodate businesses. It's, the work has been evident and I really appreciate it. I wanted to build on one of the comments that Councilmember Healy brought up in terms of re-tenanting the, a lot of the empty storefronts. It sounds like it is a non-trivial logistical hurdle to assemble information about the retail space that's available. I wonder if it makes sense to invest that energy as part of a broader project that also includes not just retail space that's available, but also land that is available for developers, highlighting what the city wants to see in those spaces. So making it easy for businesses and developers to find that information, but then also aligning that with what the city wants in those spaces. Just a thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh. Next speaker is Janice Kater Thompson followed by Matt Sharkey. Janice, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'm just going to talk about parking downtown. And it was like in 1994 or 96, there was initiative called the Washington First Initiative. And the vision was you would have a trolley that would go from the east to the west side. So if you could find an area where people could park and you could get a trolley system going, it would be, you know, kind of interesting for people to use. And, and so that's just an idea and it failed at the ballot. And it was the first initiative I ever worked at and it's really nice to hear that we're really looking at something for Washington Street or, you know, bigger for moving, moving people and getting cars out of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Next speaker is Matt Sharkey. Matt, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. I just wanted to echo Jared's statement. As a, as a parent of two kids who have played on travel ball, I know what we spend in other communities when we travel to those communities in the form of hotels and meals and gas. And I do know what a gem that the ballpark and the grandstands are at McNear Park. I did reach out to the city and Parks and Rec about a year and a half ago, at a time when I had a team of people willing to devote both materials and labor to make it cost neutral for the city and Parks and Rec. We could have had grandstands at that time and even a field landscaped. And that was basically met on deaf ears and didn't go anywhere. So I would love to continue to champion that effort with any citizens or city members that want to see that historical part of our downtown parks revitalized. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments, Matt. And Hannah, I see your hands up again, but you've already gone. So we're going to close public comment now and turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you very much, Patrick. And we're back to the council. And I see Council Vice Mayor Barnacle's hands up. And Dave.
Yeah. Yep. I'll echo the mayor's comment about adding retail cannabis in downtown. And I think signage, encouraging people to go to the parking garage should be great. I also support paid parking. And for those who weren't at the Know Before You Grow event on parking, one of the things that the speaker said was that a portion of the fees go to paying for the parking and a portion of the fees go to paying the businesses who are potentially reticent to have paid parking there. And it actually turns into a small revenue stream for them. And I think that we, you know, it's, it's a good opportunity to, it's something we should look at. It's, it's a real revenue stream and we don't have a parking problem.
Thank you. And, and Councilmember King, before you go, do you mind if staff speaks? Because I saw two hands go up by staff.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ingrid and then Jason.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the, the kudos to Nancy and I for the work that we've done. But I would be remiss to, to let you and the public think that it was the two of us. Like, we're backed up by a huge team of city staff. Every single department met probably five to seven hours a week during the toughest part of free range. And everyone stepped in with gusto, excited about being creative to solve business problems. So I just want you to know that, that it's a, that it's, it's a whole team that it takes for any one of us to do basically any project we do. And I, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that the staff from all the departments knew how important that effort was as a, as a team.
Thank you for that, Ingrid. And, and I think at least certainly the council members all know that the staff is there all the time. But you also must realize that you would be the one who would be getting all the slings and arrows should things have gone badly. So you should at least, you should at least be publicly recognized.
Thank you.
Director Beatty.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to provide a bit of an update on the Petaluma Community Sports Field, the baseball field. We had a meeting, we've been working on that design for a number of years that's in line with the, the master plan for the Petaluma Community Sports Fields. And we, we had some meetings this past week where we are at a point of, of having that project designed and scoped and ready to bid with the first phase and we expect to go out in the next couple of weeks with that. Have been meeting with the Leghorns on that project. And we are, you know, from the staff perspective, we're still very much in support of, of, you know, investing in McNear and making that a, improving that resource for the community as well. So.
Thank you. Okay, now Councilmember King.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'm going to save my comments about ball fields for the Spaces and Places section. That's how I read that. But I will have some comments and I do appreciate the comments from the members of the public. And I, that, that spoke to that subject and I completely concur with what they had to say. And appreciate the comment about the Community Sports Field that was just made by Jason Beatty. I just wanted to add, I completely spaced on this one, but I concur with the mayor's comment about retail cannabis coming up for consideration. We had, we had a lengthy discussion about cannabis. I'm guessing it was about five years ago. I remember quipping that I spent more time talking about cannabis than I ever did smoking it when I was smoking it way back when. And we put on the back burner the question of direct retail as opposed to the delivery that we permitted in our ordinance. So I think revisiting the ordinance is something I also concur with. And as to the revenue that may come from that, I think that's part of a broader discussion. Based on everything I've heard tonight, we could use all the money we could get for everything, all the priorities that are listed here. So that is it for now.
Thank you. And Councilmember Fisher?
I was just going to weigh in on a fourth vote for that, particularly in our downtown. Definitely in favor and of allowing cannabis retail in the downtown. And I'm not sure about the tax though. I'm a little hesitant about that.
Well, that, that can be.
Part of that discussion. Thank you.
Very much. And thank you to Ingrid and Nancy for your presentation. And we are going to goal five, and this is Spaces and Places That Inspire. And we will have our Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities Gina Benedetti-Petnick and Park Manager Cindy Chong will be speaking to this issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm having a little technical issue bringing my video up.
I was just glad it wasn't me.
No, it's not at all you. Here we go. There we go. Okay, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the delay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Cindy and I are going to present our fifth goal, Spaces and Places that Inspire. And this goal is focused on connections in our community. Weaving a common thread, and I'm going to turn off, I think I'm getting some feedback. We've had a common thread through the natural and built environments to inspire residents and visitors alike, creating places to reflect and play, celebrate and connect with each other and engendering pride in our community. Inspired places and spaces are especially needed now as we recover from a year of isolation during the pandemic restrictions. Next slide. Some examples of our vision of success for this goal are seen on this slide. As we evolve as a community, a city, our approaches to the built natural environments are evolving and elevating. With a strong emphasis on sustainability and working toward our climate goals, we're approaching all the themes of this goal with a heightened focus and urgency. Many of the originally targeted outcomes that you see listed here are well into development now. We've highlighted some of these visions on this slide and they're organized into general groupings of focus that don't necessarily align with the spreadsheet directly. This is talking to safe neighborhoods, including our downtown upgrades, zoning changes, introduction and study of public restrooms. Of course, our downtown streets team and our sidewalk program, which is making good strides now on ADA improvements for intersections and sidewalks, curb ramps in the downtown area to make them ADA compliant. This also speaks to fairgrounds. There are several fairgrounds, a few anyway, fairground items in this work plan group. And we've been a little, a little sidelined with the pandemic. So not progressed as, I think, as quickly as we all would have liked a year ago. But we are still definitely making some progress. We're focusing on completing due diligence on the property now, hazardous material study, facility assessment, tenant report, et cetera. And ultimately, we at this point now expect that the general plan visioning effort is going to be taking a look at the fairgrounds. And we think that community visioning will, will be coming onboard this summer. Public art is a huge focus of this, of this goal. And included in that, some of the highlights, we're inventorying our art and reviewing the master plan, doing, implementing some temporary art installations and then maintaining some city art. So the temporary art installations, we've been seeing, we have some planned that aren't up yet. We have some that have been installed this year. And maintenance of city art, the one that comes to mind is the Soda Fountain by The Theater, which was a, a fun project and a piece of art that was definitely in need of a refresh. Next on the list is public spaces. This speaks to upgrading of city facilities, our transit-oriented development focus, which really is an ongoing effort with staff and protecting and connecting to our historic structures. And lastly, parks, which Cindy will be able to elaborate on in more depth than I. But some of the, some of the work plan items here talk about reimagining parks and improving our trails and pathways, which we've been working on and have a lot more work to do. And then the community sports field projects that Jason and Councilmember King were just referring to. And of course, this parks item is certainly, you know, I think if we totaled all of the, all of the parks-related work plan items in, in this entire document, we could probably consolidate from at least 10 work plan items into one with a, with a parks master plan. So I think we're ready for the next line. So this is talking about items that staff has added in the last year. Several new work plan items associated with this goal. In doing this, we're striving always to ensure that our roots and our history are evident, but always embracing that, really that incredible present and, and the future that we're creating together. I know that sounds terribly aspirational, but this stuff is aspirational. These are spaces and places that inspire. So all of these initiatives that you see listed here are well underway, one's even completed. And I'll speak to some of these briefly. The Cedar Park, sorry, Cedar Grove Park and Open Space is a project that I think has, is finally finding legs. Staff is continuing to collaborate with the Federated Indians of the Great and Rancheria and some other outside partners. And we're exploring a creation of what we think could be a respectful and educational passive recreation and open space area there. The Paula Lane Nature Preserve with many project partners. The city's made some progress on all of the several milestones for the Open Space District Grant Program that's associated with this. And we're very excited to see the preserve open to the public by the end of the year. The Black Lives Matter mural, one of many examples of public art in this section. And this was truly an important and meaningful community street art mural. There was a lot of staff involved, a lot of volunteers and a tremendous amount of artists and, and community support and involvement. It was completed last year and we've been celebrating it and enjoying it for many months now. And, and delighted that that project survived, that that paint on that pavement survived as long as it did. So we've, we've definitely been pleased with the amount of life we've had out of that project. Housing streamlining. Staff was, I think, very quick, and this is planning staff, was very quick in responding to State of California rollout of initiatives intended to streamline housing project permitting in the state. And our planning department have now, and Planning Commission have successfully completed new streamlined entitlement reviews for two housing projects. Two more of those are in progress. And staff is also currently developing objective design standards. And that will further facilitate the streamlined permit process. And then we have the Slow Streets Program, one of my favorites, developed in response to the COVID restrictions and with a lot of community feedback. It was a quick build program, a pilot program that we created to, to implement on barely a budget. on barely a budget, if that, if you could call it that, focusing on encouraging multimodal and active transportation, trying to provide safe spaces for pedestrians and cyclists and slow traffic in our neighborhoods, and reduce a bit, too. Staff's now working to transform this pilot into a long-term expanded program. Very excited about that. And then finally, the Polyclass Theater Transfer. This property has been finally successfully transferred to the Polyclass Foundation, nonprofit organization, enabling construction on the renovation of this property for peddlers' youth and for the arts community. So next, I'd like to introduce Cindy Chong, our Parks and Facilities Maintenance Manager, who will review some of the major accomplishments to date from this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you, Councilmembers and Madam Mayor, for allowing me to be the last person to fill you in on our goals and what we've done in the last year. And really, I think it speaks to spaces and places that inspire, the things that we've accomplished in the last year and what we've really taken from what's happened in our community and our society, and that shows in many of these items that we've been able to accomplish. Now, Gina spoke to a few of these items in the previous slide, the BLM mural. But that really, you know, this came from what was happening and an outcry from our community, and it brought us together, and it brought artists together. And we have this beautiful piece of artwork that we've all been able to enjoy. The Keller Street Garage Murals, this is another public art piece and which transformed what would have been another alleyway, right? If you didn't have this mural that's just beautiful and an artist's interpretation of the California landscape. Then you go on to things like the Polyclass Theater, which have sat unused for a couple decades and really was starting to get run down. But by being able to transfer this to the foundation is going to revitalize the space for the community. Slow Streets came because of circumstances out of our control that has been a blessing and allowed for a space of reprieve for a lot of neighborhood communities where you can come out, you can ride your bike, you can walk, you can, you know, bring your stroller. There's people who are on wheelchairs that can use this space and feel safer. Trails, pathways maintenance, this is huge. As you all know, we have lots of trails, we have 47 parks, and we've been lucky to be able to accomplish some things, but the list continues on. But some of the things you can see, McNear Park, right? The pathway between where the playground is and the bathrooms had needed a lot of work, and we were able to replace that with some DG. And there's been such positive feedback from the community members on what we've done with that pathway. Over at Scholenberger, the pathway that leads from the main park over towards Almond Marsh that had grown in so much that what used to be six feet wide was closed into a point where you can only pass single file. So we're able to widen that path. Your Parks Team has been going through parks and grounding down sidewalks so that trip hazards are not an issue. Prince Park, we have gone through the design, and we're going to repair that pathway, and that is out to bid currently. So a lot of pathway maintenance happening. General kickoff, you know, the GPAC has been formed, the consultant's been chosen. We're up and running with that. Lynch Creek Trail Designs have been done, a portion of the trail that was not developed is fully funded and is going to go out to bid. So these are all really major accomplishments that we've been able to take care of over the past year. But I think you will see in each of these where some things were in the plan, some things were new, but we've changed and we've pivoted with the needs and what was happening in our community. Next slide, please. And as you look through our work plan list of items, I'd like you to, number one, still tell us what's still relevant. Two, what needs to be added, removed, and delayed, or three, the order of priority. So at this point, if Jason can pull up the spreadsheet, so we can reference that as you give us your feedback. We had 42 total items on your list. Three of them are complete, four of them are ongoing, 27 of them are in progress, and eight have not yet been initiated. I won't go through each item with you because I know this meeting is running late, but we are open here for any questions you have for feedback. Gina, myself, and Heather are happy to try and fill in any of those questions.
Thank you very much, both Cindy and Gina. I will call on the Vice Mayor first, followed by Councilmember Fisher, and then Councilmember Posake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several comments on this one. I'll start with just the general re-echo of, I think we should add a specific goal to create a skate park. And I think we should consolidate several goals into Create a Parks Master Plan and probably prioritize the Parks Master Plan, too, above actual park projects at this point, to make sure that we're moving forward on that. The McNear Grandstand, of course, and the other thing, I know at some point, prior council took the lights away from McNear Field, and I just feel like that's criminal, to be honest. I think that taking lights away from parks is really a terrible idea. And I'd love to see us actually put the lights back up, if that's possible. So on Goal 125, again, it reiterate the programming in the downtown space. Some of the prior speakers on the prior goal talked about land use, or talked about focusing on the east side with economic development. I actually think that we need to focus on place-making on the east side. And in particular, you know, areas over by Casa Grande. Obviously, when we build the train station, that's going to be a big destination. But really, what the east side lacks is a strong sense of place and public spaces and things like that. But, you know, I think if you look at the tax revenue, they probably generate a lot more sales tax from over there. We could be doing things with the land use to, you know, break down single-family zoning, things like that. On Transit-Oriented Development, Goal 140. So it mentioned that we don't really have a design for, or a policy for that, I think is what it was. It's cut off on my page, so I don't have it exactly. But I think we need to define what that is. In a prior meeting, Commissioner Hooper basically made the point that we know that 85% of the people who ride transit are low-income. So if we're trying to do transit-oriented development, I think there needs to be an affordability mandate, and I think there needs to be a parking maximum, and probably something around the floor area ratio, too. But I think that we should absolutely have a policy that if we're calling something transit-oriented development, that it's serving the people who we know ride transit. And then it mentioned that there's a trestle plan. I'd like to have the trestle plan come forward and just see what that looks like and talk more about that in the notes. It mentioned that on the trestle goal, 145. And then the fairgrounds is the one that I held off to the end of this. This talks a lot about history, and I don't even know if the word agriculture was really mentioned too much in this document. But that's, to me, what the fairgrounds represents. And there's a whole, and it serves a whole community of people that live outside of the city limits. And I saw in the notes that it talked about the general plan process addressing the fairgrounds. And I think, and then I think I might have heard Gina say something, too, when you were talking about it. And I, it raises my red flags to hear that the general plan process is addressing the fairgrounds because I thought we're, and I think we're still having a separate process for the fairgrounds. But can you give some clarification on the intersection of the general plan and the fairgrounds? I know that there's pressure on, there's a tension between the two, but it'd be great to hear the vision for how those two interplay, and then I'll finish my comments on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bronicle. I think I would like to invoke Heather Hines on this response.
You're going to invoke me?
Yeah, I'm going to invoke you because you will be our fairgrounds and general plan interface guru. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I think some of it is just, you know, we haven't fully laid out our outreach plan, but there was a thinking that fairgrounds is such a special sub-area to really focus visioning on. And so looking at, is there a way to do that visioning on the fairgrounds area as part of the visioning and the outreach that we end up doing with the general plan? So I don't think we have much more specifics outside of that. I also know we're moving forward with some of the Phase Two on that, which is kind of an essential part of knowing what we have out there and what we're looking at in order to further that discussion. So those are the two things that are kind of at play right now.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. My comment on the fairgrounds is that the tension that I see is that it's obviously housing, right? Where are we going to put housing? And that if we, if the fairgrounds process, because it's been delayed so much, and we probably should have been working on this 10 years ago, that there's going to be a tension to where are we putting the housing? And if the fairgrounds process is not happening, I'm concerned that without having a plan for the fairgrounds, we're going to allocate our Reno numbers there. And whether there's housing there or not, that's a different discussion. But if our master plan for the fairgrounds is constrained by, you know, it was constrained by, like, right now it can be anything. I just don't want that to be the case. And can you, can you talk about how that will work? Or is that just going to come out in the general plan process? Because, you know, there's a lot of people that we're trying to tell, to trust the process on the fairgrounds. And if our process on the fairgrounds is not taking us toward a truly open process that is, you know, it's just, I'm concerned about that. It's something that's really concerning to me and very personal, too.
Duly noted. I think what I hear you saying is so much of the general plan is going to be talking about where to allocate housing. And so not wanting the fairgrounds to only be talked about under the topic of housing or have that run, run the fairgrounds visioning. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Or to put a constraint on the fairgrounds visioning to where we can talk about anything we want on the fairgrounds, but we're going to have to put 1,000 units of housing there. Right? Like, that's the kind of constraint that I could see if we have to submit our housing element and we don't have, you know, and the master plan from the fairgrounds is still going on, right? And then all of a sudden, our master plan for the fairgrounds becomes, well, all of that's in play, but we also have this thing there now. And so it's not a blank canvas anymore, right? And I just want to make sure that if we're doing a master plan for the fairgrounds, that it truly is a blank slate.
I can just tell you and the rest of the council and the community, it will be a blank slate.
Great. Thank you very much.
Was that your answer to your question? Yes, I see he's just disappeared from my screen. So we're going to go to Councilwoman Fisher.
Thank you. And I would suggest that the fairgrounds isn't really a blank slate. There's quite a bit there. And I was wondering if staff could address the issues in this section that have not been initiated and just sort of give me an overview of, again, is it just timing, staffing, a desire not to do them, don't think we need them?
I think that might be me again, huh, on some of them?
Most of these are planning items, and the broad brush is that there was a lack of resources to attack all of this. I don't think it was that there was any disinterest or lack of intent or desire. But Heather, I'll let you speak to those, and I think the last one, perhaps Cindy could say a word about.
Sure. So let's see. 122 is about downtown zoning to balance entertainment venues. Ingrid and I actually just kind of touched base on this one, and I think it just hasn't been kind of rising on all the other things as pressing. So it might be something we want to revisit. Is it still an issue? I'm not even sure, I'm not sure what kind of some of the background on this one specifically was. So it might be something we want to revisit and determine if that's still a priority. Public Art Master Plan, there has just been other things that we've been doing with the Public Art Committee. You've noticed that there's been several murals and artwork that has happened. They're looking at creating a grants program to do more partnerships. So I think that is still something that Warrant's looking at again and updating. But just resources have been on other things. Explore, including a council liaison on the Arts Committee, that's 132. That's just, we haven't, there hasn't been any necessary feedback from the council on that. Happy to talk about that as well. 1% development fee for historic preservation to increase funding opportunities. That's just been staff time to look at what the precedents would be and bring that forward to the council to determine if that's a priority to initiate that. The Historic District for the Riverfront Warehouse District, that is also something that just lack of staff time. So we have some stuff in the specific plan about those warehouses, mostly along First Street. Some very preliminary survey work that looked at that. We are about 99.5% of the way there to our CLG application, our Certified Local Government. And that will open funding up for things like, so that might be something that, should we get the CLG certification? Then if that is a priority to apply for funding for a more in-depth survey in that area. Let's see.
146, Heather.
146. Yeah, I think we've looked at that as Certified Local Government would open up funding for us to do something like that. With the Mills Act or maximizing opportunities, that's just something that staff time, that is something that we could create. And it opens up funding for people to do rehab of their homes. And then I think 148 might be. Cindy, do you have anything to add to that one? Explore funding mechanism to maintain historic features in public spaces.
We just haven't had the bandwidth to even approach this one.
And then I guess, is there anything in?
208 is a new one, but it's almost, it's very similar to Goal 199, is a comment from Patrick. Where we look at all our facilities.
In 208, on the park side, I'll tell you as well, we started the discussion and looking what the Sonoma County Regional Parks are doing. They've brought on a consultant to do their GHG. We just haven't had the time to push it forward anymore, but it's there. We're thinking about it, and it's important to us. This is not something we want to drop off the list.
Great. So that one can move up the list. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Posake, followed by Councilmember McDonald, and then Kane.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, I don't know, it just seems to me that the benefits gained from money spent on parks are intrinsic. intrinsically more equitably distributed than the benefits from historic preservation. I just like to put that out there. I'd also think shopping local, a big part of shopping local is item 134, smaller community oriented public art projects would be to me, part of shopping local. And I think we do need to think more about public restrooms downtown as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald, and then Kane.
Thank you very much. I do want to shout out to all, all the nonprofits and private groups that come forward with good ideas to how to help the city. Not good ideas for what the city ought to do, but what good ideas for what they want to help with, such as the Polyclass Center, I think is brilliant. Now I'm hearing about the McNear Park improvements, which is wonderful, but Friends of the River and especially the River Park. I mean, River Park's been a big achievement this year and they deserve a little recognition for the, the good they're bringing. And and I appreciate Cindy's mention of the Lynch Creek Tale, which is going to construction and that'll be a nice add to both the downtown piece and the Prince Park piece. But I don't want to sleep on the city's project for Smart Path crossing Payran and crossing Lakeville, bringing people further into downtown on a separated bike path, I mean, a dedicated bike path. And as Caltrans finishes the freeway job and they finally open up that path under the freeway, our project should be completing at the same time as they reopen. And what's the point of them open if we stop them and put bikes onto Lakeville? So, or Payran. Much the complete job if we can get those scheduled into our capital at the same time. Similarly, I, I did hear staff mention the ADA improvements and some of the sidewalk grindings. But Petaluma is a town that is hazardous to your pedestrian efforts. And so I'm looking forward to anything the city can do. And I understand in our budget, we may have this conversation, anything we can do to accelerate the private replacement of sidewalks. I mean, so many of them, you know, i- if you're in a chair, you can't get through these sidewalk areas. If, if you have any impediment to your walking, or if you're just like me, a little clumsy, you're going to hurt yourself. And we need to help people fix that problem. But high up on my list is the fair negotiations. I think Councilperson Barnacle is correct that it should have been ongoing negotiations for the last 10 years when he said that. And, and, and clearly it means both parties should be at the table and there's efforts that both parties do. But I really feel a chicken and egg between the housing element and the site plan. I mean, if the housing element says there's no other housing in town because of sea level rise, et cetera, many of the properties that we think are developed, they might be curtailed. It'll become chicken and egg as we try and get this fair negotiations complete. And I do not want to see them come to the end without a plan in place for, and in time for the fair to have a business plan dovetail with it. So I am most very concerned on the, on the fair negotiations. And when it comes time to prioritize, we may have to not do other things so we can have staff available to the fair negotiations. Again, I consider the trestle a critical improvement to make in town, partially because of the historic element of it, the tie to the river for our community, a, a, all the character and identification that we have with it, but also as a bikeway, as we talk about how to get people through town and not on streets, trestle allows them to do that. And the trestle allows them to stay off of Ayawaska's patio and not run over people. So I'm very excited about that. And that leads us to more bike boulevards. And I don't see bike boulevards on here. There is, there are subset of things on here. But PBAC has pushed for bike boulevards on a variety of streets and I'd like to see one of them come to fruition this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kane.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have an answer to Councilmember Barnacle's question about the lights at McNear Park. The vote was taken in the first half of the year 2000. I was there to argue against the removal of the lights. And the vote was four to three. And your colleague, Mike Healy, voted to not remove the lights. As did, I don't know if she's still here, but ex-council member Janice Kater Thompson also voted not to remove the lights. I don't know if it was a crime. I think it was a bad decision. But I thought I'd respond to that because it's been a point that's been a sore spot for me for just about 20 years. My priorities here, you know, I, I, first of all, I want to say thank you to the staff for the good job, particularly on the items in the last year and a month or so in the COVID era. The safe streets, the, some of the other items that were listed throughout, I think it's really commendable that they were rolled out as quickly and as effectively as they were. And I, I'm looking at this list and I appreciate everything that's put in there and support many of the things on there. But given the hour, I want to just emphasize my support for completion of the community sports field, particularly the baseball field that's in, in use. One thing I will comment on, literally thousands of kids in our community play team sports on our various fields, whether it's organized team sports or pickup games, or just going out with their parents or friends to throw the ball around. And rarely, tonight is a rare night where we heard from three of those folks here at the council. And I, I pay attention to that being one of the parents who's been out there with her kids and somebody who coached quite a bit in this town. And I think it's very important that we keep that in mind when we talk about parks and open spaces. They're not typically the most organized political group in our city, groups in our city. But they're vital and it's vital for, you know, we talk about every politician that ever ran for office talks about kids. This is where you can help kids and build those fields and maintain those fields. And maintain, speaking of maintenance, a lot of the maintenance is a money issue, which is a real problem in our city, as has been pointed out. I really welcome the folks coming forward to speak about the McNear ballpark and grandstand. It is a major undertaking to, to completely revamp that field and make it something that is truly usable for baseball and softball in a safe manner. The field itself, between the gophers and everything else, is really not a safe place and hasn't been for quite a while in terms of athletics. But it's going to just, as a cautionary comment to the three people who spoke to it tonight, it's going to take a lot of money. And to the net, to that end, one thing I, and I'm not quite sure how this legally can get done, but this city in some level could really use a parks foundation where public and private funding can come into play. There are people in our town with, with, with assets that would be willing to put money forward for projects like McNear Park, I believe. And we have to, I think, try to look at ways where we can take advantage of that opportunity in addition to government funding and grants and so forth, because that's, that's our traditional look. But I commend those folks for coming forward. I, I will work with you on that project. And in terms of making it a goal, it would have to be, I'm sure, a long, longer term goal here because it's going to take a while to get that, that thing in motion. And I just want to make one last comment about the fairgrounds. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm committed and have been committed my entire time on the council. I think the only way we're going to go move forward is with an open meeting process. And I agree with the city manager about it being a blank slate. We have to have a discussion about governance. We have to have a discussion about what the needs of the fairgrounds folks are there. And then we can probably start to make some decisions. But I hope it's a collaborative process with both the fairgrounds folks and the broader public. Those are my comments. Oh, and one last thing. I'm the person who put the, the goal of having a council member lay us on, on the art committee. Heather Hines is correct, it never gained any traction. I'm not going to do it, but I think it's a good idea. And I don't mean to be, you know, correct. I am not the person to be your art committee liaison. But I do think it makes sense for this council to have somebody on that committee. It's one of the few that doesn't have a council representative. And it's been requested by some former members of the committee as well. So if anybody else wants to join me on that, that quest, I'm, I'm open minded to have a, have a partner. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go on to Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. So I would, I would also be interested in a council liaison to the public art committee. And I'm even less qualified than Mr. King, so I would not put my name out for it. On, on the fairgrounds, I, I really hope the headline coming out of tonight's meeting is the council is considering putting a thousand housing units there because that is not a decision that's anywhere close to being made. We're, we're, as, as staff indicated, we're working through some homework assignments. Phase two was mentioned. There are others. And I, I remain committed to an open, inclusive process on that. In, in honor of the hour, I'll keep this brief and just raise three specific things. One thing that I didn't see and hear, I think the community, as we, as our artificial turf fields need to be replaced in future years, there'd probably be support in the community to move in from ground rubber, ground tire filling to cork. And I, I think that's something we should start to plan for. I don't know that we have any of those coming up anytime soon. And then I'm, I'm very intrigued, very intrigued by the possibility of getting the trestle rehab. I, I've grown skeptical of that over the years, but you know, if, if, if there's new light on that, I'd, I'd be very pleased. And I just wanted to comment briefly and give some history on what's listed as item 143, which is considering designating historic railroad tracks in Central Petaluma as a local landmark. And this may be before the memory of a lot of folks here, but when Water Street was paved with cobblestones and First Street as well, the tracks there were preserved. But it was specifically not done, intentionally not done, that the, the ties underneath those old tracks were not replaced or even inspected. So there's no idea of what kind of heavy rail traffic those things could potentially support at this time. I'd, I'd be skeptical if they could support much. And the other thing was several years ago, staff started paving over some segments of the rail tracks downtown, just putting asphalt over them. And that was without any council input. But my educated guess as to why that was done, the city was facing, had faced several serious lawsuits from bicyclists who got tangled up in those tracks at some, at some key intersections. And so it was a safety issue. So I just want staff and yeah, in the preservation community to be aware of that's why those steps were taken. So I, I would be a little bit cautious on moving forward with, with 143. And in honor of the hour, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnacle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm a night owl a little bit, glutton for punishment. I'll echo what Councilmember McDonald said about bike boulevards. I think that bike boulevards are best implemented by, by the community because you create ambassadors. And that's why I think ad hoc, to focus on active transportation would be a good call. And I would like to, to see that come forward and discussed. On the fairgrounds, I don't consider it a negotiation. I consider it a master plan. I don't think that we're negotiating with anyone right now. I think that we need to come up with a vision and then not settle for anything less. So I just, I resent the, the notion that it's, that it's a negotiation and that thing. This is, this is, we need to create a master plan. And then the, the final thing, I'll echo. Thank you for the history, Councilmember Kane. And I appreciate that you keep it, stay positive on that. And I, I'd like to see some sort of a parks foundation too, just in general, more community participation. I've had so many people come up and ask about community gardens, adopt a park programs, things like that. There's, we can just make them gathering places and attract community. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I am very much a proponent of a new skate park and have been for quite a while and feel that that, that is something that I would like to see prioritized. I, I'm, I'm a no vote on a council person being on the public art committee. When that committee was set up, it was set up in a way to keep it from being political. And you can see that in and of itself, it generates political interest. So having a council member on that, I don't think, well, it clearly isn't going to bring any expertise. We've just been told that by two members. But not, not saying that no one else has any, but you know, I don't, I'm not sure what value is adding by actually adding a council member. So I, I will leave it at that. I believe, 148, I do believe we need to look at the historic restoration of our old Carnegie Library, which is our historic museum. And that actually could have been wrapped in with our discussion about the fire station and police stations. I do think it is a priority. Not only is it a, an historic landmark, but it is also quite a heavily used building that does a lot of community events and also brings in a lot of tourists as well. Item 144, the certified local government, I'm so glad to hear it's 99.5% completed. I think we just need to roll it over the finish line because I do believe that that will unlock money for other preservation goals that we have in town and might motivate some of the business building owners, not the businesses, but their building owners, landlords, to take better care of their buildings and, and modernize them in ways that, you know, get us toward our climate goals. And I agree with Councilmember Healy that past actions may preclude item 143, the preservation of the railroad tracks. So I'm not, that's not a high priority for me because of that. The fairgrounds, 127 through 129, it is a negotiation. It's not a master plan. At this point, we have to decide what is going on because there's a lease ending there. So there has to be a negotiation. Wishful thinking doesn't change that. That doesn't mean that a master plan can't be part of that, but what we are in now is a negotiation. So that's just the reality of where we are. And I think that should go forward. I heard Ms. Benedetti Pecknick say that she thought that should be coming to the community, a community discussion this summer. I look forward to that. I want it as open as possible. I know that the know before you grow people have already been working on visioning for that that area, what, what it, how we can go forward with the fair, with the city, everything. So I know that a lot of community members, we get people who call in a lot because they're very, very concerned about that. And I think it's great. And I think we all want to have the, the discussion on, you know, in open and accepting and not very emotional level, if we can do that. So with that, I see our city manager's hand is up. And then when she is done, we will move to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, we will be revisiting the fairgrounds planning, but I'm not going to commit to this summer. I think I would like us to get through our May 24th prioritization to figure I would like us to get, um, through our May 24th prioritization to figure out where that ranks. I'm sure it's a high priority. I just want to make sure we have the staff and the resources to be able to do that. So just want to manage expectations.
Okay, Gina was just excited. Uh, but that's okay. That's good. That's a, keep sure, our, our staff is so eager. Um, so with that, we will, I will ask, um, Patrick to, uh, open the public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to speak on this last item, um, in our public comment, please raise your hand in Zoom and you'll be called on in turn. I'm sharing my screen because I can see there's a number of hands up. First is Hannah, followed by Kylie Giovando. Hannah, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, I wanted to speak about McNear Park. I've been spending weekends watching some of the Legs and Horns games, which progressed into admiring and daydreaming about what the baseball field and grandstands once looked like. I began to ask questions about the upkeep of our parks because it seemed every grass field I went to looked forgotten. I began to speak to people and have heard so many beautiful stories of growing up playing on McNear Field. It seems to have this magnetic force that brings up the idea of community. My neighbor plays in the 60-plus rec baseball and still practices at McNear as he did when he was a kid. The grandstands deserve to be restored, the netting replaced, and the gophers and infield cared for. There are many people willing to donate their time and money. The city could create and adopt the park to keep maintenance up like the Little League fields do. I love the idea of a Parks Foundation to maintain our fields. These grandstands have already brought me together with my community, and I haven't even been able to sit in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Next speaker is Kylie Giovando, followed by Matt Sharkey. Kylie, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you for commenting on the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds hits on almost every topic that was talked about tonight. Most importantly, there needs to be more public outreach before time runs out. And the city council really needs to listen to the community members that live here and those that utilize it, especially those in agriculture. Fairgrounds are used for youth emergencies, family time, schools, and so much more. And it should continue that way. I believe it's vital to keep the fairgrounds for all the reasons it's being used for currently, plus new ways it can be used. I don't believe a key piece of city property should be utilized for housing. It should continue to be used as a community meeting place. And as for art, I believe that local artists should be the ones that are showcased and not artists from outside of our city, bathtub included. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. Next speaker is Matt Sharkey, followed by Blake Hooper. Matt, you may unmute yourself and begin.
Thanks. I'd like to encourage the city council to work more quickly at enabling a public forum around the future of the fairgrounds. Um, as Brian mentioned, it's an agricultural hub. It houses educational institutions. It's a revenue driver each summer. And it's a critical property to support evacuations, uh, for our now annual fire season. I've spent the better part of my weekends over the past two years directing a documentary series about the historic nature of Petaluma Speedway. I recognize that some simply view the Speedway as noise pollution on Saturday nights, but the documentary filming has afforded me exposure to the quite literally hundreds of multi-generational families whose lives would be permanently altered in significant ways if the Speedway were to go away. Not to mention the economic impact of a thousand plus spectators bring to our city every Saturday night and the lack of outdoor entertainment for families throughout Petaluma. So to wait until summer or fall or later to open up a public discussion of the fairgrounds puts the promoter of the Speedway at a great disadvantage with his lease up a year later.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you there, Matt, um, but thank you for your comments. Madam Mayor, I believe, um, we're approaching 11 o'clock. Did you want to call a vote?
I would like to know if someone on the council would make a motion to continue the meeting after 11 o'clock.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay, um, so, um, motion by Barnacle, second by, um, Pusake, uh, yes, okay. And, um, is there any opposition? Please raise your hand. Not seeing any opposition, seeing unanimous vote to continue the meeting. So we, thank you with that. We'll go back to the, uh, general public comment or the general, the public comment on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, next speaker is Blake Hooper, followed by Joseph. Blake, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Uh, thank you, Patrick. I really just wanted to thank Gina, Cindy, and the rest of the staff for their accomplishments with regards to public space improvements and slow streets. And also, Patrick, I just wanted to give you a shout out for handling all of our public comments tonight with such kindness. And I just wanted to quickly echo the comments made about needing lighting for the park facilities, just because of how dark the city does get at night. And as a PBAC member, I would be remiss without emphasizing the need for wayfinding, updated trail maps, trail improvements, and of course, more lighting for our trails. And I'm grateful for the council members who called for Bike Boulevards tonight. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here for so long.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is Joseph, followed by Susan Kirks. Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
I'd like to start with, uh, thanking Brian. Uh, you know, you bring up some really great points about the fairgrounds. Um, it's, um, more than just a dream. Um, I think that you are, uh, definitely doing really good work, uh, supporting the community, and the community, um, realizes that. And I think everybody else needs to realize that, um, the community wants this fairgrounds and, um, they need to realize that in a hurry. Um, bringing up the next point, which is, um, pushing off the public forums uh, past the summer, um, is not beneficial to this. This fairgrounds uh, discussion has been pushed off for too many years and too many things have gone by. It needs to be handled, and it needs to be handled now in a public, uh, forum and in front of everybody. The fairgrounds can fill so many other goals that need the, that the community requires, and it already does. So it's a very important spot. Save it.
Thank you for your comments, Joe. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by Ben Peters. Susan, you may unmute yourself and begin your speaking.
Thank you. The Paula Lane Nature Preserve is Paula Lane Action Network's project name, project design, and a project sensitive to the conservation easement protecting the land. Over $500,000 toward the grant match was complete in June 2019. Only six months remain to complete project implementation by November 2019. What the city of Petaluma has done and allowed to be done called work at the Paula Lane property has been very damaging, very damaging to habitat and protected conservation values. A proposal may soon be forthcoming to restore honesty and integrity of process to the situation. It would be nice to see one of you elected officials interested in supporting such a process. If you are, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ben Peters. Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Goalwin51 talks about an LED lighting project. And so number one, please, please, please consider financing for that project. And once you confirm what is eligible in terms of LED lighting improvements and the cash flow positive nature of such financing, you'll be able to do a citywide LED lighting upgrade quickly and cost effectively. And you can re-divert those scarce dollars to our parks, not to the light bulbs. We learned at the parks meeting that the utilities line item is almost a million dollars. That's a million dollars that gets wasted in inefficient lighting. And we are not doing the right thing by doing these one-off LED projects. It needs to change. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Paloma. John, you may begin your comments.
Um, in reference to the fairground, the fairground is very important place for the community. There's a lot of events takes place in the community. And I hear you talk about time and time and time again about tax and money and generating fund for the city. Well, how much money does the fair brings to the city for all the events that takes place? I, I mean, you guys are just, y- y- you're going in so many different direction. It's kind of, a person can't keep up with you guys. Uh, some, some of you are making very valid points, and some of you are just going round and round in circles. Why don't you make, uh, an open conversation as sooner, sooner than later and, uh, hear from the community? The community's been telling you over and over, you know, they want the fairground. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Paloma. Paloma, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thanks so much, Patrick, and thanks, everybody, for staying late. I really appreciate you taking the time to hear our public comment. Um, I want to be a voice in support of housing at the fairgrounds. Um, I think the things that happen at the fairgrounds are incredibly important. We need a ton of community. We need spaces for people to get involved. I just think that where the fairgrounds is, is such prime location for housing, and we have such a housing crisis right now. Um, it's incredibly important, you know, like in the hierarchy of needs, we need food, shelter, water first. And community comes a very close second to that. So I really think we need to support people, helping them find housing as soon as possible, um, and then build community. I think moving these events to another location makes a lot of sense. Um, and I don't know how it will happen, but I have faith that we'll figure it out. I just, housing is super, super important, so I appreciate y'all talking about it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Paloma. And Madam Mayor, that's the last hand I see raised, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. And I, I really do want to thank everybody in the community who, um, attended today. It, uh, I know one minute is not very long, but there were very few people that we didn't really hear almost everything you had to say. And many people, most people actually stopped before the one minute. So, um, I really appreciate the effort that you made to get, to make that happen. Um, so now we are going on to, uh, discuss the themes and the next steps. And, um, this will be, the next steps, of course, are in May, uh, May 24th. That's the second part of this. And I'd like to turn that over to our Assistant City Manager, Brian Cochran, who drew the short straw because he had to be here at the beginning, and then he has to be here at the very end to perform. So, thank you very much, Brian.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. And yes, just wanted to give a little bit of a preview of, uh, what we'll be working on over the next month and then bringing back to the council uh, on our May 24th workshop. And so the slide that you have here, um, is a sorting of 18. We're calling them prioritization themes, but you know, basically, these are major groupings of initiatives, or they may be major projects in and of themselves, um, such as general plan updates, um, or, or other issues may have many work plan items. For example, climate action probably has several dozen that are underneath of that. And so what the staff will be doing uh, over the next, uh, four weeks here is going through all the feedback that we, we've received tonight. So thank you, everybody, for chiming in, um, and giving us some of your priorities and some of your feedback on these items. Sorting through, as we talked about earlier in the meeting, what ones are completed and can be taken off the list, uh, what ones are, we're classifying as ongoing, meaning they are just part of our regular, they're already integrated into our regular way of doing business. Um, we will probably, uh, dispatch with those in terms of this exercise, but there may be some other way that we want to document those. Um, in, in terms of these are things that are values of the city, uh, and these are ways that we do business. And then look at the remaining items and that are either in progress, that are not initiated, or, or that are not initiated. Um, and then sort those into these various themes. And this, these are just our first, really our first draft. So some of the wording may change on these as we get, um, more detailed into the actual work plan items. Uh, but this is just kind of a preview. And so once we have done that sorting into the various themes, we are going to do some staff work, have conversations, uh, internally to try to take the feedback that we received and get an initial prioritization under each of these goals. And then we will come back, um, at that May 24th workshop. And actually, um, Aaron, if you don't mind going to the next slide, I think we have a, just next steps as our final concluding slide. So, uh, at the second workshop in May, we will, uh, we will be running the council and the community through some sort of prioritization process. Um, not a hundred percent sure what that will look like, but really the intent here is to, uh, get a bit of a, a time, you know, timing prioritization as well as a, a resource prioritization. So we will be likely sorting all of the work plan items that you looked through tonight and that were in the packet uh, into year one kind of timeframe items, year two timeframe items, and then uh, longer term, lo- longer range items that we, we don't think we'll be able to get to in the first two years. And so we will want the council to weigh in, whether it's a polling exercise, a voting, um, voting exercise, something like that, to get priority. And then we will compile all of that second, uh, second step feedback into a, um, draft new goals and priorities document to bring that back to the council at a future date. So that's just kind of a preview of what we'll be working on over the next month, as well as what we're envisioning for that second workshop. And, uh, with that, happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have.
And we do have them. So, uh, Councilwoman Fisher?
I, I, just a quick question. So you talked about the existing goals, um, and I know that, um, a number of us um, initiated new goals this evening, including a parks master plan. Um, is that, presumably that's added to your list, right? That you didn't explicitly say it?
Correct, yes. So the, the sta- as you saw tonight, the staff, I think, had added something like 57 new goals that were in the green part of the, of the, the sheet. And then we did hear some other new ones tonight. So we will be consolidating all that feedback, creating, uh, some new goals or some new work plan items, and then sorting those into those themes that, that we saw a minute ago.
Wonderful. Good, good luck with all that.
Um, so, so I want to just jump in at this point to say that, um, I think it's going to be a really hard process, um, to actually set priorities. Um, I, I think it's Mr. Healy who likes to say, you know, we all have like 100 first priorities. And, and he's right, you know, um, you know, it's, you just can't, you know, there's not, there just are a lot of first priorities. I, I, let's just, just be honest. So, um, I, I really do hope that, uh, staff is able to, um, think of some way to make us brutally have to make choices that we don't want to make. Um, and just let the, um, you know, let, let the vote lie where it does. Because, you know, if we're not forced to make these choices, we're going to have 100 first priorities and, and staff will not be given direction. So, um, we need to be disciplined. We need to make those hard choices. And, um, we can moan about it later, I guess.
We won't leave Zoom unless everybody's prioritized, just FYI.
So bring your jammies. Uh, yes, so, okay. So is there anyone else who would like to say anything before we go to, uh, general public comment? Okay, well, uh, thanks again to staff for everything. Uh, this, uh, was a difficult job. And, um, I think everybody weighed in a lot, so I, I, I think it's been a very, very useful workshop, even though it's virtual. So, you know, here another first. Um, so with that, I will ask our, um, intrepid moderator to open public comment on items that are not on today's agenda, which almost makes me think you can't talk about anything. But I'm, I'm sure that's not true. So, uh, can we have public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to be starting a 30-second timer, um, shortly. Um, those of you wishing to speak on general public comment, raise your hand in Zoom, and I'll tally up the number of speakers and divide the time, um, after that's done. So, starting that 30-second timer now, um, and this is just a reminder, as the mayor just mentioned, these are for items that are not on the current agenda, so not about the goals and priorities. Uh, that time for public comment has passed. Um, and please raise your hand in Zoom, and you'll be called on in turn, and it just And just a reminder that if you were unable to speak during the time allotted, you may send your comments to the city clerk, as always, at cityclerk@cityofpetaluma.org. So we have two hands raised, and that will be John Hanania, followed by Josep. Let me reset the timer to three minutes, because there's only two. All right, John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Question, and I really like to get an answer for. When I look at all the committees that in Petaluma, I don't see the city manager, and I don't see the city attorney. Why are they in the ad hoc committee? It seemed to me that the city is trying to have total control over that committee. And I really like to have an answer to that because, I mean, I can go to every committee, they're not there. So what's the difference here? And for some of you, it's very late tonight, so you're not going to get to hear from me, but prepare yourself for the next meeting. You're going to get an earful, especially two of you. And after that, I'm going to go down the line, one by one. So I'm going to keep it short, but prepare yourself for the next meeting. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Josep, and that will be the final speaker. So Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for staying around and doing this meeting. I think it's important, obviously. One of the items that I do want to make sure that we're all aware of is that even the people that are in the public, our committee, need to be held responsible for their actions and their comments. I think Catherine Plank's comment about small-mindedness in the community was inappropriate and offended a lot of people, and I think she needs to resign. I think that's unnecessary for her to talk about the community in that way. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joe, and thanks all speakers who took their time to speak to the council tonight. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment on non-agendized items. And I would just like to say regarding Mr. Hanania's question, although Councilmember McDonald was correct earlier, in general, it is considered bad form for the council to respond to the public comment, and also, it may even be illegal in some cases when it's asking about something that hasn't been publicly agendized. And so we have to be very careful about how we respond to questions. So usually, we don't. But Mr. Hanania seemed to feel that by having our city attorney and our city manager as part of the ad hoc committee, that they were trying to dominate the committee. The way that committee was set up was to be a committee between the city and the community. And I believe that it is absolutely essential that questions that come from the community, because a lot of the people on that committee have not served on other committees, that they need to be able to have very informed people, in addition to our chief of police, who's also there, to, you know, as a resource, to answer questions that they may have, because we don't want them to waste their time going down, you know, areas that really aren't going to be moving forward. So I don't know why Mr. Hanania is so angry with the city, but, you know, I do hear it in every comment he makes, and I just want to make sure that the record is very clear that this ad hoc committee is there to hear our community and to give guidance where needed. So it would otherwise be a bad use of their time. I do see Councilmember Fisher, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say that also, they're both at the Climate Commission and the Planning Commission meetings as well. But the reason I have my hand up is because we talked tonight, you know, about our priorities, and we also talked a lot about staff and staff burnout and how much they're doing. And so I just want us to think about between now and the next meeting, that those two things go together. If we don't prioritize, we will continue to have this issue with staff. And so, you know, we really want Peggy to be able to take a vacation and to not be working the hours that she is, and show that example to staff. And so if we can really be disciplined in prioritizing over the next two years and not burn them out, I think we'll all be better off for it. Thank you.
I think that's a very good note to end on. So thanks, everybody, for your contributions this evening, and we will continue this discussion on May 24. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.